Okay. Well, Rick is around here somewhere, but I'm going to call this meeting of the Rockport Select Board to order for Monday, September 12th, 2016. The normal thing, please turn off or mute your cellphones, and if you have to take a call, please step all the way outside because we can hear you very well if you're out here in the lobby. Before we proceed, I'd like us to take a moment to pause on the reflection of the life of Frank Ferriello, who died in a very tragic accident while supervising the work his company was doing on the replacement of the Mill Street Bridge back on Thursday, September 1st. Frank has worked on a number of projects for Rockport over the last couple of years, and he will be sorely missed, so if we could have a moment to think and to reflect on his life and the services that he has done and how we tragically miss him. I believe I can speak for all to say that our thoughts, prayers, and condolences go out to Frank and his family. With that, we need to move on to the purposes of our meeting tonight. The first thing is the public hearing. We have a public hearing on proposed general assistance ordinances, appendices A through D, which will be effective October 1st, 2016, through September 30, 2017. There are a number of them. These are mainly what the individuals can receive if they need general assistance for whatever reason, housing, heating, meals, food, things like that. This is something we do every year, and as with all public hearings, I will open the public hearing. I will ask if anyone wishes to speak in favor, if anyone wishes to speak opposed, and if anyone wishes to speak neither for nor against. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing, and this is on the amendments to the general assistance ordinance, which will be in effect, where did I put it? Well, I said October 1st, 2016, through September 30, 2017. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of adopting these amendments? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to adoption of these amendments? And does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against these amendments? And with that, I will close the public hearing. We will be voting on this down under "new business" later this evening, so. The next item is minutes, meetings, and announcements. We do have before us two sets of minutes that we have received and need to. The first is on Monday, June 20th, 2016. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept the minutes. This is on June 20th, 2016. Do we have any changes that need to be made?
The only suggestion I've had, and I thought I had emailed it, and maybe there's a reason that it can't be done, but on all the votes on the previous meetings where it says that Brendan was not present, I think it would be more proper to refer to the fact that at the time of that meeting, he was not a member of the board, because there were some of those meetings that he actually was present at.
Yes.
But he was not a member of the board, so he couldn't vote on the exception of the minutes. Other than that, I have no changes.
Okay. We can have that made to the minutes. Any other changes, errors, omissions? Hearing none. I'll call for the vote. This is on June 20th. All in favor of accepting as presented, or as amended, I should say, as amended. That passes. The next one is the Thursday, August 11th meeting. That was here at the Opera House at 9:00 a.m. in the morning. Do I have a motion to accept?
Both to accept.
Second.
Moved and seconded. We were all present for this, and we had some other people. Do we have any changes, errors, or omissions that need to be made to these minutes?
Nothing that I was, I know the last time we had talked about the extensive presentation of the discussion, and there were some members of the board, I think, who wanted to revisit some of that, and did any of that happen, quite honestly?
It didn't, you know, there were some conversations. I think I was probably the one who raised the concern. I still think that it is not feasible to accurately record the conversations that we have in this way. This one particular meeting is one where we don't actually have a video record of it.
Mm-hmm.
But if anyone else wants to have the conversation about whether or not we should be attempting to record information in this way.
We did raise that question to the attorney when he was giving us the update.
My understanding is we used to record considerably less information.
Yes, and I, actually, I've spoken with the town manager, and some of these that are way in arrears, we're just going to go with the motions and the votes and not really include anything else so that we can clear them off. You know, what is the opinion of the board at this point? You know, because I'm very, I'm happy with just going with the minimal, the motions and the votes, because we do have a record.
Well, I mean, I think, I think we determined that the minutes trump the video record, if I'm not mistaken, the written minutes.
If they are.
Yeah, when we asked a lawyer that this last go-around, he didn't say unequivocally that that was the case, if I remember.
Yeah, I think he indicated that the laws hadn't caught up with the technology yet or some comment to that point. But at any rate, I mean, I, when I was first on the board, we were doing minutes only with motions, and there was some sentiment among the board at that point that we wanted to have reflected some nature of the conversation. I think it's, the pendulum is swinging, I think, with these things to a certain extent, and I think it's nice to have an indication that a conversation took place and maybe hitting the high points. I think in this case, we may have gone, and again, that's very difficult for whoever's taking the minutes to determine what the high points are, especially as they're occurring.
Well, when we don't have the video recording, then it would be more appropriate to have it.
Well, it is, yeah, but the problem is recording it accurately, and quite honestly, I can't tell you even the things that I said, whether I actually said them that way or not, and it's very difficult, but, so I guess I'm inclined to think that in this, in this case, that the minutes have reasonably captured what the discussion was. Whether it was totally 100% accurate, I doubt it, but reasonably captured the discussion, so I'm happy to approve these minutes, and then I think going forward, maybe a little more concise reflection of the discussion, particularly on meetings where we have a video recording.
I'd be happy to pull the pendulum back towards the verbose, only in that it's as a searchable database or as a searchable document. It's much, it's much quicker to get to that part in, say, 13 pages, where there used to be only four pages of minutes, but to get a flavor for it, and then if you wanted to dig deeper, then you go to the, you know, you go to the tape, roll the tape. But I think that as a document that does get searched upon occasion, that having a flavor plus is beneficial to those people that are searching.
Okay. I agree. I mean, as long as there's the videotaping of it, then you can go for the extensive, what was the exact wording? Getting that flavor plus is fine, but with the meetings where we don't have the videotaping, you know, and I agree with Ken, it reasonably captured what the conversation was. Yeah, it probably wasn't 100%, but that's, I mean, Linda's got to jot all this stuff down as fast as she can go, so it's difficult.
I'll work with Rick, then you'll come to a happy medium.
But I think what would be helpful for us would be to, if we, if we can decide that on, for the November 9th, November 17th, and the May 9th meeting, that if we can just go back and capture the motions that were done at those meetings, that would help Linda be able to get those off her, off her plate, if the board was okay with that.
Sure. We have a comment from the press?
Is that okay to comment?
All right. I'm going to need you to come up to the microphone, and then we will finish this.
Linda Clancy, Penn Bay Pilot, and I just wanted to comment that taking minutes of meetings like this are one of the most difficult things to do and to be, to say, capture the flavor is really a very subjective, hard thing to do, and taking minutes should be compensated. I don't know how you all are doing it, but I know it's an art, it's a skill, so please value it highly, however you proceed. Thanks.
Thank you. So, with that, I'd like to get back to the topic that was at hand. We have the motion to accept the minutes of August 11th, and it has been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Thank you. That's tough. How long have you been doing this for?
It was when Bob Nichols was on the board, so it's been probably eight years.
Yeah, at least. So.
Thank you.
With that, all in favor of accepting the minutes? That is carried. Some announcements that we have here. The next regular select board meeting will be Tuesday, October 11th, 7:00 p.m. I repeat, that's Tuesday because Monday is Columbus Day. Couple of select board upcoming workshops this Thursday. The Ordinance Review Committee Agenda Development Workshop will be at 5:00 p.m. over at the Richardson Room.
Is it at the Richardson Room?
Oh, wait. Where is it?
That's right.
It's not going to be at the Richardson Room.
It'll be here.
It's going to be here. Sorry. That's right, I forgot. We haven't quite finished the work. The Reserve Account Policy Workshop will be Wednesday, September 21st, 4:00 p.m. Will we be able to do it in the Richardson Room by then?
The 21st?
The 21st.
Yes, we'll be okay by then.
Okay. And then the pre-budget workshop will be Wednesday, October 19th, 6:00 p.m. here at the Opera House, and that will be livestreamed. All meetings and workshops for the select board and town committees are on the town website. I do have a couple of important ones. The town office will be closed Wednesday, October 5th, so the office staff can attend the main municipal associations convention this year, being held in Bangor at the Cross Insurance Center. And, yeah. The town offices, all town offices will be closed Monday, October 11th, in celebration of the Columbus Day holiday. I'd remind everyone that Election Day is Tuesday, November 8th. Polling will take place in the Richardson Room. Please enter from the front door and follow the signs. The polls will be open from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and also, the town offices will be closed Friday, November 11th, in celebration of Veterans Day. The committee openings are listed in the agenda. Agenda changes. Do we have an agenda change this evening?
Do we want to move Item D? Do we want to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Then I would move that we move Item D under "new business" to right after the town manager's report, and that's the discussion regarding the police chief arrangement with Camden.
All right. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor? All right, we will be doing that. Public comment.
Later?
No, earlier. Public comment. Public comment should be, I need to finish reading it. You can work your way on up, Mark. Public comments should be directed at issues not under discussion on this evening's agenda. Comment from the public will be welcome prior to each agenda item. Further comment will be granted only by permission from the board. All public comments should be brief and to the point. We have public comment.
Thank you. Maggie Christie from Rockville Street. I just wanted to mention two volunteer opportunities that are coming up to help beautify Rockport. Friday, September 23rd, as part of the state-sponsored coastal cleanup, we'll be cleaning up five Rockport parks. And the following weekend, on Friday, September 30th, and again on Saturday, October 1st, we're going to clean 12 to 15 roads, and we're looking for volunteers for both events, and if anybody's interested, you can contact me, Maggie Christie, at 230-4563. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got South Street to Rockville.
You do. You do. I got you down.
Do we have any other public comment this evening? Then let's move on to the town manager's report. Oh, he's signing things, so I'm going to start. I'll kick this off, okay? So you can finish there.
Yeah.
I see her back there. Ms. Murphy? Tracy? Would you come on up here? Normally, when people have served long periods of time on the select board and other committees, such as Tracy, who's been on the select board, served time on the AHL, the ad hoc library planning, which, when she was on there, she said that she spent more time with the members of the planning committee than she did with their own family. That was the dedication. You were on the planning board and the budget committee before that, and I'm going to let that, you know, wait, because we'll be here all night trying to list all of the items. Mr. Manager? Do you have something for us? I'm going to, actually, I'm going to take this on around, and then we're going to have to try to figure out how to get the plastic off of here. I got a Leatherman.
He knows how to use it.
At least that's what he says.
I want to take it off so that we, everybody can see what we've worked for Peter Ralston who's done for us. Can you get your hand in there and slide that? One more. Okay. There we go. Okay. Now, Tracy, I'd like to present you this, given to the town, and for all of the years of service, and we hope that they're not completely done.
I was going to say, I'm not dead yet.
I know. Yes, you know, this is, I think it's called "The Light," Peter Ralston original. We felt that this most symbolized the light that you have brought to the town.
Thank you. [applause] Can I cover myself up with that?
However you want. Come on, guys, you've got to get older. Come on, Jeff, you can too. What are we doing?
Get in the picture.
Come on. Y'all right back here? You guys have to get in the picture.
Well, are we, hang on, give us a second to cut around.
We'll get everybody. This is, this is really hurting cats, you know that.
Yeah, I know about that.
Dedicated cat. Okay.
Okay, that's great.
Press has got real cameras.
Better, very clout. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all. I can't, I can't, it's like, I shake hands, but I've got a handful of, thank you.
It's like a twill, megapixel camera in there now.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And I, and I knew, I knew with Tracy, using subterfuge and guile to try to convince her to be here for some reason other than what it was going to be just wouldn't work, so I had to tell her.
Isn't that beautiful? So, thank you. Good choice.
Thank you. Thank you. And I think we also have some other recognitions we want to make here at this point, don't we?
Yes, we do. You have them.
I have them, and I'm going to go down around in front too, because I'm going to ask the people that are here to please come up. As you know, we have been celebrating all year our 125th anniversary. And with that, it was such a wonderful time, we had so many great events, that I'd like to ask the people that were on the 125th Anniversary Committee to come on up. I'm going to read the names of those who have participated. Of course, there's Linda Clancy, Linda Greenlaw, Michelle Hannan, Sarah Shepherd, Maggie Timmerman, Kirsten Delano, Lisa Farley, Michelle Hell, Gretchen Richards, somebody left her name off, Stacy Para, Connie Russell, Stephanie Cumbel, Vernon Hunter, and Jonathan Porter are also assisted. So, would you please come on up here?
Yay!
Now, I'm going to figure out how to open these without ripping all of the insides out. They're all Peter Ralston originals.
Perfect.
Michelle's not here.
Stacy's original, please.
And another, Michelle is not here.
She's in Maria.
Okay. And Gretchen's not here. We've got certificates for everyone, Lisa. Boy, I must have signed these in the reverse order, yeah.
Yes, I have on the bottom.
Maggie?
Thank you.
There we go. Thank you. Down with some of these here. Linda?
Thank you.
For you.
Thank you.
I think I'm almost out.
That's nice.
And Sarah?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, oops. Stacy?
Thank you.
Thank you for preparing them. It's kind of hard to keep a secret from the person that does the work.
Name spelled right?
She's not here.
You get the E in it?
And Linda. Linda, thank you very much. Really want to thank you all, it was a great effort, and we get a lot of fun.
We have good fun.
We got to do it again. Not here, not next year.
Five more years.
And while he's sitting down, I actually want to say something about our chair, because he was, in my mind, the impetus for kicking this off and having us get going on doing it, and the committee did a tremendous amount of work, but I think without our chairman's insisting that we celebrate, I don't know that any of it would have happened, so thank you to Bill.
Bye, Tracy.
Thank you.
Bye, Tracy.
You don't want to hear my manager's report? They're leaving.
Yes, now we want to hear you, now we want to hear you, we want to hear your manager's report, and the people at home want to hear the manager's report.
Go ahead, if you want to leave, I'm not going to be insulted. You've already read my manager's, yeah, I've seen it. She had to correct it.
See, Linda.
So, my manager's report, as was reported earlier, with the tragic death of Frank Ferriello on the Mill Street Bridge project, that has impacted the completion date of that project. Bottom line is, we've gotten enough work. The bridge is open, and it's safe, and we've let the family know that there's no, no pressure from us on our part to get it completed by the completion date without them having to pay a penalty. That said, the paving, it has been done. I believe the, from what I understand, the guardrails are being put in tomorrow. That was a separate contractor was going to be doing that, so the guard, the contractor is supposed to come in tomorrow and set the guardrails in along the outside, and then the finish grading and cleanup work will take place whenever that needs to get done, whenever they can get back on the site. So, it was a very tragic accident that's been, it's hard for many people in this whole process, but we may be looking to the board to allow the family to have a small sign and memorial for Frank for his death on that site. The School Street project, as Jeff probably is very well aware of, has gone on quite a long time. That, my notes say it was going to be paved on Monday, but they actually did it on Friday.
Well, the binder coat.
The binder coat was done on Friday. Did they do the finish coat today? No.
The state was paving all up and down there, disrupting everything.
Where two roads collide.
Yeah, right. So, and then it will take another week of minor cleanup work and ditch shaping, and but that should, you know, that should take care of that, that site. The Summer Street project is another thing entirely that is, is pretty far behind. I've been, I got today that they're, the plan is for them to finish up by the end of the month, be paved and out of there. So, they've been working on that. I had a meeting today about that. The high sidewalk, the telephone poles have been delivered, but I don't think they're, I haven't seen evidence of them being installed yet.
Could I ask a question? On the Summer Street, the additional work and cost, is that covered under what we've already allocated for it, or?
Yes, yep. Yeah, we still, there's money, we allocated, you know, I can't remember the exact.
Like a 10, one of those 10% contingencies or something like that?
Right. And there's also, there's a minor change of, one of the residents brought up a concern about water that, it's next to Jan's house, Jan Rosenbaum's house, there's water that collects in the driveway and eventually runs down the street, and about the possibility of collecting that and draining it down the street, and that wasn't planned, and we're looking at now whether we can, because it's going to eventually run down the road anyways, can we collect that water and ditch it under the road and underground to get it down to the next open ditch, or else we end up with a big puddle. It's been a historical, historic problem there all along, but, so we're looking at that now. The high sidewalk, as I said earlier, the poles have been delivered. I'm not sure what the holdup is, other than maybe today they decided not to come in because they were paving, but we, we expected that the poles to be, started to be put in here anytime. Mike said the CMP will be there, moving power lines will take at least a week to move all the power lines and all the lines across. So then the construction would start, the third is going to be starting, I believe, next week, the week after.
I have a question. Is that going to make a one-lane road for those five weeks?
Not for the five weeks, no.
But for some portion of time.
There'll be times, yep, there'll be times that there'll be a single lane of traffic there while they're working, which, you know, initially, we thought they were going to start working earlier, but it's actually better for us that it's a little bit later, because the longer we wait, the more traffic dissipates. I mean, I think it's down to the point now where it's, it's as low as it's going to go, but in the height of the summer or in, before Labor Day, it's busy. That road gets a lot of traffic. The vestibule is, which noted in my, my notes, was paid for with a grant from the Cascade Foundation, is nearing completion. Actually, I believe Will was sweeping up, and there, everything is pretty much done with the entrance, with the exception of, the windows have been templated because it's custom, custom windows and custom door, custom windows around the door, so that, that material has been ordered, and it, it should be in in the next two to two and a half weeks, but we can, once we get Linda moved back into her office, we can open that front door and free up the Richardson Room, because the installation of the glass is not going to be a major problem for them, for people to come and go while they're doing that work. So, the HVAC system and heating and air conditioning, I think we've gotten that under control. It seems like the repairs we made are working. As I noted, make note in my notes, is that one of the complaints we've had is that it's actually too cold, which is, we were, and we, it was pretty hot this summer, and we were able to keep up with the, the air conditioning needs of the space upstairs, so that's worked out very well, but we do need to be very aware that the unit that's out there has exceeded its life expectancy, and while we're, you know, we're holding it together, it will get to the point where we need to replace that, that whole unit. So we should be working on, funding a reserve account that will replace that. The West Rockport, West Rockport sidewalk extension is nearly completed. I'm not sure, he was talking about paving it today, but I'm not sure if they got to that. I think you'll see, the curb is in, and you can see how it, it narrows up, how far out. It looked like the work was going to take the sidewalk way into the travel lane, but once the curb is back in, you can see how it's, the travel lane hasn't been restricted to any great extent. The new sigil is.
We need to be clear that this is the West Street sidewalk here in Rockport Village, not a sidewalk out in West Rockport.
Yeah, West Rockport, oh, yes, West Street, yeah.
Because we do have sidewalks in West Rockport.
Yeah, this, that's right. My notes are incorrect. My, yes, West Street, yep. My note is incorrect. Megan and I, we finally collected all of the information for the CIP, so we're meeting tomorrow and the next day and the day after, I believe, with department heads going over their CIP stuff, so then we can start working on prioritizing them and getting them to the board and for the CIP committee to look at.
Yeah, Alan Mitchell keeps asking when that's going to get going.
Yeah, yeah, it's, the department heads have been working on it, and now Megan and I will be working. The department heads have been working on it, and now Megan and I will be working on it this, the rest of this week. Kerry from Assessing has been, finished up in Camden, so we just started seeing him back here. It worked out that, you know, he'd spent a lot of time here doing our commitment, and then as soon as he was finished here, he went over and did their commitment, and just focused entirely. So we didn't see him for probably a week or more here, while Camden didn't see him for a week or more there. But, bottom line is, we got a, the commitment was done pretty smoothly with not a lot of hiccups and bumps in the road, although we still are having problems with the conversion between Vision and Trio. And Kerry was at a recent workshop and said that many towns are complaining about that same problem, and they're, that that organization is talking together about, you know, working as a group to basically apply enough pressures to the, to Trio and Vision to work out that bridge problem that they have. Jamie's been working on the, amongst other things, one of the things you'll see in the next, in the coming, if not at the next meeting, the meeting after, is an RFP for solar on the roof. And he's also been working on the Goody's Beach Study recently, that's recently in draft form from Gartley and Dorsky.
I think that the solar on the roof is awesome. How did I miss that? How did I miss that there was an RFP going out?
Yeah, I mentioned it at the last meeting.
Oh, it wasn't at the last meeting?
Yep. So-
You missed an opportunity.
One meeting and I missed it?
Mm-hmm, just like that.
That was quick. Well, good job, everybody.
So, the fire department's been very busy with, one of the roles that he's taking, the fire chief has taken on, has been like the safety and training officer for us, and so he's been very busy with that. And so our training, we've been working, having our safety meetings on a regularly scheduled basis now. We work on, we've been working on training of the town office staff and fire extinguisher recertification. So, bottom line is, our, our loss experience from Main Municipal resulted in a savings of $6,408 this year, reimbursement from, from Main Municipal. It will take us several years to dig out of where we've, where we got to with, with a number of our claims, but we're on the right track now. So, Main Municipal is happy, we're happy, you know, we meet monthly. Now, the safety committee meets every month, just before department head meeting one Tuesday a month. The sharing of the police chief between the two towns has been very, very, very positive. I haven't had a single negative complaint. I've had a lot of comments from people on how well it is working. I think one of them is sitting in the audience, which, we'll talk more about this, this topic later on in the agenda. The library is beginning their, their very popular seafaring series this month.
Next month.
No, next month, next month. The harbor is finally slowing down a bit, and the parking enforcement helped. We did a lot of parking enforcement and it did help, I don't know if you noticed, but the parking on the north side of the bridge was getting more and more use, with the encouragement from parking enforcement to say, "You can park over there and you won't get a ticket."
Actually, when I was helping out over at the Camden Windjammer Festival-
Uh-huh, yep.
I was, I spoke with Mark.
Oh, really?
Mark Bennett, right?
Yep.
And he suggests that we may want to look at our parking ordinance-
Uh-huh.
-for some clarifications and upgrades and things like that.
Mm-hmm.
He said, you know, that it's quite different from the one he uses over in Camden and gives them some more teeth.
Yeah.
Could you expand it all on the incident that we had, we had, everything's been finalized on that? Payments were made, right?
I'm not sure what you- You mean the lawsuits?
The lawsuits. Are those completely done? How's that standing?
Yes, that's not in, I don't have that in my manager's report.
It was in the newspaper, it was in-
It was in the newspaper and I just didn't know, how, how are we-
We're all set.
We're all set.
It's all, it's over.
Yeah, it's over, it's done.
It's over, it's done.
Right.
Okay.
Insurance took care of it.
The insurance took care of it. It settles all claims on behalf, on behalf of the two claimants, and it settles all of the cases against both the town, the former chief, and Craig. Okay.
General assistance.
General assistance. It's been relatively quiet, but it's starting to, it will start to pick up here soon. We are, we have a heat, the heating assistance program is meeting, I believe it's, Stacy's not here any longer, but I believe it's Wednesday, they start their meetings, the town office, they're going to meet in the conference room to do interviews with people for heating assistance, so. And that's my report.
Any further questions to the town manager?
Couple of comments, couple of questions. As Rick said, the Frank Ferrillo situation was a difficult one. Just a comment that sometimes I think all of us take for granted that our infrastructure is going to be constructed and we'll be able to use it, and the reality is that these are all very dangerous jobs. Our public works guys are doing dangerous jobs every day, and, you know, compared to 100 years ago, the safety record is very good, but it's not risk-free, and I think we all need to keep that in mind. On Assessing, you mentioned the, this long period of Kerry in Rockport and then the long period in Camden, is that okay?
Yes, oh, works fine.
Because I just, I wanted to make sure that if that was okay, or if you had to make any adjustments for subsequent years or anything like that.
No, no, it worked, it worked really well, actually, because we used Caitlin, I think?
Caitlin, yeah, I was going to ask about her.
We used, we used Caitlin, and having the two of them work together made it, the process go much, much smoother. There was a lot less pressure, and Kerry and both of them were able to run through problems much quicker, and it was a lot less stressful-
Good.
...than it has been in the past. And having two, having two eyes look at things, they were able to track down, track down things much quicker, and they could, they also did their final inspections much faster than they usually do, because two people on, on site made it go much smoother.
And in terms of citizens calling into the office, they just, they'd return the calls when they could?
Oh, yes, yeah. We, surprisingly, we haven't gotten a lot of calls or concerns, not a ton.
My final question on the AED training.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that the select board should do?
You could.
I just, I mention it because, I mean, often we're in these meetings or whatever and the public is there, and I know that, I assume the entire staff will get it.
Yes, we're going, the last, the last ones to do it is in the town office and the harbor, and so that's the last group to get done.
All of our police vehicles and fire trucks have-
Not all of them.
No, not all, just the police?
Just police, the chiefs, I think the chief's truck has it, and the-
Response vehicle.
Yes.
Yeah. What is it, 24, 25? I can't remember the number.
Well, I guess if you could let us know whenever that training is happening.
Okay.
If, I don't want to get in somebody else's way and, you know, keep somebody else from having it, but I think it, I mean, I wouldn't mind having it.
Yeah, if there's, I was going to say, if there's open slots, if you can just email us-
Yep.
And we wouldn't be a burden to it, I'd love to go as well.
No, it's fine.
Okay, Jeff, I think you-
No.
Oh, I thought you had a question, okay. No other questions?
As a matter of fact, I'm just trying to think now, if, where is the AED unit in this building?
I don't think we have one here.
We have to.
It's right in the town office.
Oh, oh. We should have one upstairs.
I thought we had one someplace here.
Chief?
Is there one, is one in the hall? Chief, we want to run in the hall and see if there's one in the hall.
I might get lost, but-
You'll be safe upstairs.
For some reason, I'm, I'm seeing that it's on the wall in the hall there.
He hasn't seen it yet.
He'll be back by now. For some reason, I thought it was on the hall in the, wall in the hall over there.
Okay, okay.
Anyway.
It's not in that hall there?
There, there's a to-do.
Big red thing?
There's a to-do for it, you know?
It's a budget item.
Actually, Kerry should know and be trained on it.
Yeah, and Juniper.
And, yep.
Save a life, dude.
Do we have any other questions for the, do we have any other questions for the town managers, because I'd like to move this along?
No, we have no more questions.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the, actually, the new business item D that we changed the agenda for. We have Chief Gagnon here, why don't you come on up? And, we got, oh, we have the town manager back, so-
Yep.
Let's, let's find out how this agreement is working, and, you know, we're having, we have two reviews scheduled, this one and another one in November, and then in December we have to make the decision to renew for another six months, or where we want to go, you know, make a decision where we want to go at that point, so.
Rick all done with everything he wanted to say?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I, they have it all in my, in the backup?
Yeah.
Hard to believe it is two months already, but we went into this actually at a really good time, because it's the busiest time of the year for both departments. We went into it day one with a lot of things already done. We put together new policies and procedures that are the exact same matching policies that we have in Camden. We did that so officers working in different jurisdictions are crossing over, and supervision would make that much easier for those that are working within those policies every day. Very good mutual aid agreement that we drew up that everybody agreed to, and that is working excellent. We're able to give better coverage. Instead of single officer responses to some of the incidents, we're, we're having automatic response. Say an incident at Pen Bay ER, where there's not a lot of information that comes in, we'll automatically start another unit from Camden to back that officer up, because we don't want somebody going into that by themselves. That's working good. The dual supervision, my sergeants in Camden being able to listen to what's going on in Rockport at night and guiding the officers. Sergeant Ford does the same thing during the days on weekends. We don't have very many hours of the day where there's not a supervisor on duty in either town. So that's, that's been a very, very good thing. Our officers are sworn in both agencies, so they have another level of liability coverage. Those things were done right out of the box. We needed to do that, put the good agreements in place, and that's been a very big help. We also switched all the officers in Rockport over to the Camden frequency, so we're all on a similar frequency. We can pay attention to each other, what's going on, we're not interfered by being on a shared channel in Knox County, another plus for both. We, we went into this, we knew there was some deficiencies in training, so we've started focusing on new training records, how we keep a track of the training, also offering training to officers. We sent officers from Camden PD and Rockport, Jim Moore, my detective Kurt Andrick, in Camden just went to critical incident negotiations class, was put on by the FBI, it was two-day class. We've sent officers to statement analysis class for both departments, read method of interview and interrogation. Sergeant Ford is scheduled to go to the first class in the FBI trilogy series, along with Wes Butler, which is FBI supervisory training, at the end of the month. We'll do a joint range qualification first of the month as well. Everybody getting together, working together. We all have similar weapons in both departments, we've done an upgrade in Rockport as well. Those will go online just as soon as we get to the range. We took care of some cruiser lighting, safety issues that had been brought up, side marker lights in the cruisers. I actually operate an unmarked vehicle myself. Was going to an accident in Rockport one day, watched as the cruiser had to come to a complete stop at the intersection, which is a very good safety thing, but when you only have front lights and rear lights and you can't see anything out of the side, it poses a very big dangerous problem at intersections. We knew there was a deficiency, we took care of that. Joint investigations, Detective Andrick assisted with the Rockport officers with getting 50-car burglaries taken care of that occurred in both towns. I've got the detective working with doing background investigations. On the hiring front, I've got full staff in Camden once again, and probably by Friday I'll give in Rick a letter to hire an officer here in Rockport. Nice young man from Washington, firefighter, EMT, so, very good plus. Doesn't have any experience, we'll have to send him to the police academy for 18 weeks, but, nice young man, I think he'll fit in very well here. Our assists, Camden has assisted Rockport 61 times in the last two months, Rockport has assisted Camden 24. We knew that the number would be skewed because we have a bigger department, there's less people working over here. Don't mind doing that, because it's working out very well. Since July 1st at midnight, midnight July 1st till about an hour ago, Camden had covered 1,524 complaints, and Rockport had covered 1,097. We've been busy. We've had some critical incidents, as we all know. That was investigated jointly by supervisory staff from Camden PD. I was on vacation, very hard for me not to respond, even though I was getting updates, but I had to give the officers and the supervisors a chance to work through this, which they did fabulous. They did everything right, they made all the right calls, I didn't have to come in. I wanted to, because that's the way I am, but it just showed that our agreements are working, the supervision is there. Dana Smith didn't need any supervision on this, he did an excellent job, but just having those other levels of officers there is, is a great help.
I think, you know, it's worth talking about the fact that supervision isn't necessarily just supervision-
No.
-to make sure they're doing their job, it's support and being-
Support, guidance.
Guidance and backup.
Somebody to, to bounce the questions off, if you don't know. And another set of eyes to look things over, so we make sure that we're doing things the way we're supposed to be doing. I figure that we've surpassed where we should be at six months right now, and we're only at the two-month mark. It was, it's been fast-paced, but we needed it to be, now we can slow down and refine some of those things and work on some others. I haven't had anybody tell me, of course, maybe they wouldn't, that this isn't going good, but the officers in both departments have been very good, I have had no issues at all, as far as, "I don't want to do this," everybody is working together good. I have to say, the staff at the town in Rockport, the select board members that I've talked to, and Rick himself, has been, everybody welcomed me day one, and it's been, been a great working relationship so far. I'll answer any questions you might have.
Still time.
Yeah, yeah, there's always time. You know, I, we've been lucky with what incidents we've had, we haven't had anything. You know, I expect that one of these days we're going to have something that's major, but we'll deal with that as it comes along. That's what we, we train for the things that we hope that don't happen, but we train for them.
Like, it was a very positive report, appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I, you know, as I recall, it was like the first week that we were working together, that we had a high-speed chase going on, and your sergeant stepped in and talked to our guy.
Yeah, it was actually the week before we, we had the agreement, but we had already been in talks, and I had talked to the officers, and the recommendations I made during that talk helped to, to end that chase that night, by cooperating and working together.
What's the most negative thing you can say about the cooperation?
I'm not saying this just because I, I don't have any negatives, I mean, there-
Like, that's what I'm trying to find out, I guess.
I have some, myself, I have some long days, but I answer my phone all night long. That's, I took the job because that's the way I am.
And we have had a positive comment from somebody in the audience here about the additional patrols that are out there on the roads now because of it.
You know, we are a service agency. If things come up and people need service, that's what we provide. We take care of those issues or address them the best we can. I've had requests for radar details in Pascal Avenue, Rockville Street. Trying to, my officer in Camden who does our speed studies is in Europe right now on his honeymoon, but we're going to try to do a speed-
No excuse.
Yes. If you see the pictures, he's one lucky guy, I'll tell you that. We'll do a speed study over on Rockville Street, I've got a couple I need to do in Camden as well, but those are the things, you know, with its equipment that we have, we might as well utilize it. Sometimes it takes that, gives us an idea of what vehicles are actually going, traveling at. Sometimes vehicles look like they're going fast when they actually are. It's been a very positive experience, and like I said, we've done it in the busiest part of the year, which now we can go into some slower months. The officers, like I said, have been great, no complaints at all. Yes, sir.
So, one of the things that we've heard in the past is that Rockport is not a very exciting place for an officer to be, if that's what they're looking for.
Yeah, I can tell you that it surprised me, the amount of what goes on over here, and I've worked for 28 years over in Camden. This is a very busy town, and for single-unit responses to some of the stuff they go to, these offices have worked alone, by nature of scheduling and whatnot, quite a bit. I think that it really is- I think that it really is comforting to know that if I make a traffic stop at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, I'm down near the town line, the other cruiser's going to come by, which they used to do anyway. But now that they have, they're a little more comfortable of being able to do that. Another big thing that I have not heard is, well, Camden cruisers are in Rockport all the time, or Rockport cruisers are in Camden. I have not heard that once. And even when somebody has mentioned, "Oh, I saw one," they'd say, "Oh, I saw him working with the other officer," or something to that effect. So, that's been very positive as well.
The second part of my question was whether the co-mingling and the sharing of sort of new experiences, you know, Camden might have this kind of thing that our guys could go to and learn from that, is, do you feel that that might be helping morale and that, just, sometimes when you get to work more, you're better, you enjoy your job better?
Well, when you're stuck five miles north-south and then five miles east and west in a geographical area, when you can stretch that out to six or seven sometimes and you see things that happen in another area or another agency, yeah, I think it gives a little more excitement to the job. There's a lot of nights during the winter that 10 hours is like an eternity, but, you know, you find things to do. Like I said, when Chief Kelly's retired, we were creative is what we did, because if you weren't, you were going to go crazy out there at night. But I think the joint trainings, the joint meetings, the supervisors being able to come over and check in and whatnot is, can only be, you know, beneficial to both towns. We've seen the good of having the Rockport officers come over. I mean, Travis is always willing to step in during the day when he's a supervisor. Haven't had an officer say anything about, you know, "Well, this is a Camden supervisor, this is Rockport." No, it's great, they work together very well. I see it as a big plus.
One of the things with the radio frequency, sharing the same radio frequency, one of the pieces that makes it more seamless is that the Camden officer or the Rockport officers hearing what's going on in the other town, they don't have to rely on the Camden officer or the Rockport officer calling dispatch and asking for backup, which they could always have done. They just, they hear what's going on, they have time, they start rolling in that direction, and, you know, there, it's more seamless.
You're getting it real time.
Yeah.
Where Rockport used to be on a separate frequency, unless we were pushed into scan mode on our radios, we might not hear what was going on there. Most of the officers listen to scan, but when you've got a lot of agencies on one channel, sometimes you'll miss it. You know, the communications and things are much better now with cell phones and whatnot, but having them all on that same frequency is-
Early on in the, early on in the early stages of this, we had a call at the hospital that, you know, it was a pretty serious call, response to the hospital, and the Camden officer heard the call, you know, heard the call come in and responded immediately and arrived on the scene like a minute after the Rockport officer, which would have taken in previous, previously five or six minutes for, you know, the call to go to dispatch, go back to him, get him in the right position, get him moving. He started moving in that direction, knew it was a serious call, and ultimately, as I remember, it took like four people to subdue the person, to get him under control.
Is Bass Salt back?
Can't remember what it was.
We haven't seen it like it was. I'm sure that it is in the area, but we have other issues with opiates in the area that, well, you and I were at a meeting last week, so.
But that seamless kind of knowing what's going on and being able to respond and not seeing that there's a barrier there, it's just, it makes it more automatic.
I mean, we can always call units off.
Yeah, they can, you're right.
Officer gets there, everything's okay, they let dispatch know, now the officer can turn around and go back. And that goes for, you know, Rockport going to assist Camden. They hear something's going on, they'll start rolling. We get a domestic, everybody's going to start heading that way. So, once they know the officer is in and safe and they don't need anybody, you can always go back to what you're doing.
Yep.
So, I, this is, Chief, this may be a question for you and maybe a question for the other board members, but I have a sense that what's being described is something that has been contemplated several times in the past and that our voters were not wild about.
Not really.
It never came to-
It never came to vote, yeah.
It never came to that.
Okay, so for my part, I just want to say that I have heard nothing but positive things about this development from anybody, so if there are voters who feel differently about that, I need to hear it.
And I'd love the opportunity that anybody that has any questions, come see me. I've given my email out, I'm available, they can get me at either station, but I'd love to sit down, because, I mean, I can answer a lot of the questions. Sometimes it's just procedural that somebody doesn't know, and if I can answer it real easy for them, we're happy to sit down with them and answer those.
There was a study done about 10 years ago, I think, about the merging of the two forces, and there was a lot of work, it was apparently a pretty expensive study too, but what came back didn't satisfy at least the Rockport Select Board at the time.
I think, Bill, it was a matter of timing, as Bill.
Yeah, it was definitely, it was a matter of, we all recognize, I mean, the talks have been going on for 20 years.
Yeah.
But we recognize that, to be fair to individuals, that you couldn't really go at it seriously until one or the other chief retired.
And the other thing we're doing is, we're doing this different than what the studies were, you know, we're still two individual departments and we're sharing resources.
This is not a merging of the department.
Because a lot of the earlier discussions were, let's merge the departments, and I think that this time around, we took the shorter step of saying, "We're not going to merge the departments, but we're going to forge a better working relationship between the departments and share the chief."
And I can tell you, there was, there was one day this summer, we had six incidents going on at one time. You know, there's several going on in Rockport, a couple in Camden. We were able to dispatch units from each department. I ended up handling a traffic accident myself, which I had to upgrade my computer so I could do the main crash because that, how long it'd been since I'd done a crash report, but it was good, I got back into it. But even as hectic as it could get, it's still manageable. Yeah, it's going to be long days for everybody that's involved with this, but-
On one thing, the inter-local agreement is a six-month agreement, so it expires the end of December, I think, that's the timing on it. And we're having a review now, we have another two-month review after that, but if we're not going to extend that agreement, and I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't extend it, but if we're not going to extend that, we would have to kind of know that information now to start planning for that agreement ending, but I will sort of ask the rest of the board. I mean, from what I'm hearing, it seems like we would at the very least want to extend that agreement another six months or whatever to allow us to get through a whole season because if we come back in two months and say, "Well, that's, for whatever reason, we want in the agreement," we don't have enough time to make the adjustments that we need in Rockport.
Yeah, you'd be, you'd be looking to extend it for a period of months so that we could, you know, start the process of recruiting.
I just want to float that idea among the board and see if there's any-
I mean, I'm not trying to, you know, solidify my future, but to be honest, to get a good evaluation, you've got to go through all four seasons.
Right.
To see exactly, you've got the worst one behind you right now.
And at this point, there's nothing that's saying that we shouldn't go for the full four seasons.
That's, yeah, that's what I want to, the point I want to make.
There's nothing that's jumped out and said this isn't working.
Yeah. Because I think, I mean, I think we have to operate on the assumption that we're going to extend this agreement. We're not obviously going to vote on that tonight, but I think we have to operate on the assumption that we're going to extend that agreement another, at least, six months. Otherwise, we need to start planning now for something different, and I don't think there's any reason not to.
And I've told both managers, I will do this as long as the boards want me to, and I can operate it. I have no issue working for two managers and two boards. That might be difficult for some people, but I'm not saying it just because you're all sitting here, but it's been my, my, my talks with you people have been very, very good, very positive. I have a great board in Camden, two very good managers to work for.
Have you spoken with the Camden board yet about how this is going?
The other night, I happened to be at a meeting, and I had a few minutes there that I took at the end of the meeting to just give them an update. It wasn't as in-depth as this, but I gave them a, in the nutshell, three-minute, but basically covered about the same thing. And I routinely see people on, you know, members on the street and we talk, so it's-
So, they're not raising any issues that we-
None that I've heard.
Maybe they have a joint meeting to work out?
No, I think everybody's happy so far.
Owen?
This is a question about budgeting.
Yep.
So, we did the budget before you became the temporary chief. Is the budget that we approved for you to do training, equip the officers, are you finding that that budget number was okay? Do you have what you need?
When I took over as chief in Camden, I adopted a budget that was drawn by the former chief, and I've made that work. I can make this one work. If I find areas, you know, training was one of the things, Rick and I have talked, there are going to be things that we're going to, you know, I don't know exactly how much fuel you guys burn in Rockport. Those things that I'm going to have to pay attention month to month, but, you know, you've got a very good finance person in the office there, and I have told him, "Don't be afraid to say, 'Hey, you're spending a little too much money here, this is where you're going to slow down a little.'" But I watch the figures.
She will.
Yeah, but I do, same as my Camden budget, I watch the figures monthly. The other thing I do is, I, every month when I get my budget statement, I give it to my supervisors, my administrative assistants. Keep an eye on the figures, you see anything, you need to let me know. You share that responsibility with them, they take some ownership in that because we all have to watch that. You've got to watch that bottom line. Now, we're spending some money over time because we just don't have the personnel, which is expected. We get the new officer on, I'm thinking it's going to take two months to train him, he has absolutely no experience, we're not going to put him out there until he's ready, and we're comfortable that he's out there.
Good.
So, I'll make it work, Owen. Any other questions?
No. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate the efforts.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. Nice job.
Yeah.
You're on a good one.
And as always, if you have questions, you know where to find me, I gave you all my number.
Well, and truth be, I don't think you were blowing any sort of smoke, I mean, everything that you said, because I've heard good things and I talked to you and relayed those, and I'm sure other people did too.
Well, there's no sense to do that because, you know, you can always validate everything I say.
Yeah.
And if it wasn't working, I'd be the first one to tell you because I'd just go back to Camden and my utopia over there. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we now move on to unfinished business, and the first item that we have is the discussion on how to fill the library committee vacancy. The library committee is, their chair here is here tonight to endorse this. They had a meeting last Friday, and they had a, they took a motion that the library committee recommend to the select board that the two-year vacancy created by the June 6, 2016 resignation of Stephanie Lash remain unfilled until the June 17 regular election, at which time the normal process for electing a library committee member to be followed, to fill the remaining one year left on that term. And that motion passed 4 to 0 by the library committee. As you recall, I had asked that we have time to entertain their thoughts on the process and how best to proceed, and that's how they came about, you know, they said that things aren't really that pressing at this point, that they think that they can continue on through as opposed to having to have an appointment made by us that would fill out the remaining two terms, two years of the term. So, as I said, the chair of the library committee, Ann Philly, is here tonight. If we have any questions on this or how we want to proceed.
No, I was just waving goodbye.
Oh, oh, I thought you might have put up your hand to speak.
Thank you.
She came here, you know, anticipating that we probably would have some questions about procedure or whatever, but do we have any?
I'll just make my, my thought process. So, I totally wanted to just appoint the number three person who got the third amount of votes. I wasn't aware of the fact that it would fill out the remainder of that term. That information did kind of change how I was viewing this, because I, and then I ended up talking to some library people and I was trying to get a better feel for what was going on, so I wanted to just get the other person in there, but especially with that longer term, I wasn't as, it definitely muddied the waters a little bit. And I know, Ken, we and I had both kind of talked about what's the problem with appointing someone, but I felt like we were operating that it would just be to the next election.
No, it has to fill out the entire term.
And that really kind of changed things.
That's the law, and that's, I mean, that's our duty, and I'm, if the library committee is comfortable going along without it, I guess that's okay, but if they're not, then you should tell us because it's, it's part of our list of duties.
Yeah.
There is a vacancy there, and we have, you know, the power and the duty according to the charter to appoint somebody.
So, one of the considerations, and thank you, by the way, for allowing us to have our meeting and for us to do some discussion. One of the considerations is that we felt it was very critical that the town be able to vote for the remaining term, not to have someone appointed because we are elected to a particular term. The other thing that we looked at is that in June of 2017, we'll also have an opening for a three-year term. So, to us, it made more sense to have both the one-year remaining term to finish Stephanie Lash's as well as the three-year term to both be voted on by the town of Rockport residents at the same time. I think otherwise, it does get a little confusing. We have felt very comfortable that we can make decisions. I think the only issue comes up if that, we don't have a quorum, that is an issue. But I feel like, and the group felt, and we talked about it quite a bit, that it would make sense.
Has that been an issue, the difficulty in getting a quorum, or is it typically not? You have people show up and everything's fine?
No, everybody is able to show up so far, and if not, we've been able to change our meeting dates, but that hasn't been an issue going along. We just, this is the first one we've changed because we weren't really scheduled to meet until next week, I believe, so.
Has historically, has that board always been five members or has it ever been seven?
It's been historically five members, however, in 1914, it was three members. I do have a history.
That was, that was a different committee, though, I think.
That was a little bit different, yes.
That wasn't the one that's been, that was established by the vote in whatever it was.
Ann wasn't on that committee in 1914.
I was not.
We could probably call Steve, come in and give us the history.
That's right.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
So, are we good with letting this sit? We don't need a motion because it's an unfilled position and we just remain, allow it to remain unfilled.
If the library committee is comfortable with it, I'm okay. I'm not at all hesitant to take on the duty of appointing if we need to appoint if there's a good reason, but if it sounds like things are moving along reasonably well and, okay.
Okay. Then we go to our next item of unfinished business, and that's approval of the process regarding alternate members on committees. We've all had our shot at wordsmithing the policy. I think it went from about five pages to three or four, and that includes a cover page.
And once again, I do have to interrupt you and say, it really shouldn't be printed up until it's actually approved.
Yep.
Because it just-
You're right.
It keeps going, it's that automatic dating thing.
No, I mean, it's, you know, subject to-
Yeah, you should be able to change the heading there, whatever, you know, subject to, you know, pending approval or something like that, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Or just leave it off.
Well, as a document, it deserves, it deserves some sort of documentation, if you will, on this.
Draft version or something like that.
Right, it's just, it's just that it's, it's subject to, you know, we do have other situations where, here's a copy, is this really the one we passed?
Yeah, yeah. That, you know, that is a good point, it also occurs in the bottom of the last page. So, do we have any?
Well, for discussion purposes, I'll move to approve the policy on alternate members to boards, committees, and commissions as presented.
Second.
Moving seconded, so we have discussion.
I know in your comments, you said that the ZBA has been eliminated because of the statutory requirement that it show up in the land use ordinance, but I'm trying to find where in the-
That was according to the town council.
Right, but I'm trying to, you know, see where that's noted in the policy itself.
Yeah, I don't see it on here.
It's not in this policy, it's, it refers back to, refers back to what, I mean, the state statutes that, no. I had the same question, and our town council wants to-
They said that we needed to amend the land use ordinance because that's where the ZBA construction is set out, I guess, in section whatever of the land use ordinance. That was the comment from the town council, I think, and I don't have that in front of me, but I don't know.
Mm-hmm. Oh, do we want to table this another month, clarification on that?
I don't think so necessarily, I mean, if it's-
Because if it requires a change to the land use ordinance, we've got the Thursday night.
Yeah, well, so that's an easy change to make. And I don't know that, I mean, the land use ordinance won't allow it, so this policy that, you know, the land use ordinance will trump it, I think.
Oh, it cedes it, so...
Yeah, I think we can adopt this policy and then when we change the land use ordinance, we won't have to monkey around with this policy at all.
Okay.
'Cause that'll be covered under the land use.
Right.
Owen?
I had a question. So, in the informational packet, it says, included in your packet, blah, 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 changes were made to include alternate members of the appointed quasi-judicial boards, comma, commissions and committees, et cetera, et cetera. And I circled that because I didn't think that we were... Maybe I'm just confused. I, I was thinking this was more about members from out of town.
No.
Versus just vacancies.
No, that was a different conversation.
Or alternate, alternate.
This is just alternate.
Yeah, the first iteration of this excluded the ZBA and the, and the planning board.
Because of the quasi-judicial.
For whatever reason.
Well, we weren't sure that state law allowed it.
Yeah.
And so, the attorney said state law allows it, but we would have to make it a...
But indeed, those are the boards that, that in, in a pinch could use it the most because of continuity of, of, yeah.
And the only other question that I had was where, so we've got Section 3 eligibility requirements to be eligible to be appointed as an alternate member are the same as those appointed as a regular member. Where are those found? Those requirements?
Various places, the Charter.
Various places, a lot of different...
Some of them, if we establish an ad hoc committee, we might, you know, we might make some requirements for that.
I don't know how these things typically go. Do you typically put some sort of see reference, blah, zy, blah, for requirements?
Typically institutional memory and individual memory. I mean, we're not as formal as to cite all of the sources.
Well, we created a policy last year about non-resident members, you know, like in relation to the Recreation Committee. And, you know, that would be one of the criteria here. And, you know, most of our committees would be allowing non-resident members, but the quasi-judicial would be different.
Right.
But within our Charter spells out how many regular members there are, and typically the bylaws of that committee would, would allude to that as well.
Okay. And each committee may be a little different. That's why the statement is somewhat more of a blanket statement in this policy. I think it's fine.
So, we've had a motion and it's been seconded to adopt this. Do we have any further discussion? Nope. All in favor of adopting this policy? That is five-zero. So, we are now finished with unfinished business and we can move on to new business.
Hey!
We have no, we are not acknowledging any gifts to the Town, committee resignations or applications. So, we will go to a hearing from Ian Stewart, the Director of the Coastal Mountains Land Trust, and he has a...
It was only an hour and fifteen minutes. That's not bad.
You know what, actually? At Bill's suggestion, I told him eight fifteen.
Hey, yo.
I think it's eight fifteen.
Spot on. So...
Now, your job is to keep me from going too long, so. Well, thank you for having me. Again, I'm Ian Stewart. I'm the Executive Director of Coastal Mountains Land Trust. I've worked with Coastal Mountains Land Trust since, to, the fall of 2002 and was originally attracted to the job largely because I wanted to spend as much time as I could at this place. Beach Hill Preserve is, of course, Coastal Mountains Land Trust's founding project. We started in 1986 as the Camden-Rockport Land Trust and had our original office on this street and began as a local land trust reacting to the perceived threat of development on Beach Hill. And it's become, for us, our flagship property in the place where we can show many, many people the range of things that we appreciate and do in a quick period of time, from wildlife to recreation, scenic habitat, historic preservation, all those sorts of things. And it's our 30th anniversary this year and we've been doing a lot to celebrate that. And part of that is announcing the largest land conservation project we've ever set out to do, which is taking place in Camden, Rockport and Hope. So, I wanted to speak with you tonight for a few minutes about the Round the Mountain Collaboration, which is an offshoot of a project we've been working on conserving bald and ragged mountains since 2003. And just a few beautiful pictures of what we're up to. This is the backside of Grassy Pond in Rockport. And many people don't appreciate Grassy Pond from this side, but it's a beautiful view of, of the large expanse of Grassy Pond all the way to Ragged Mountain. So, this is one extreme edge of the project area. And then this is looking down from near the top of Ragged Mountain onto Mirror Lake, which is also the second lake in this project area. And we've had some fortunate times, taking some beautiful photographs recently to try to captivate people's interests.
Are these drone photos?
They are.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna say, man, you got it. And I wanna go to that spot, but I don't fly.
Well, and this, this weekend at the Camden International Film Festival, we're debuting a film, a three-minute film that flies over the whole project area.
Wow.
That's gonna show before four of the movies in the festival. And David Conover's film company was gracious enough to help us do that, so. It's very exciting to see that come together. I, I almost brought it tonight, but we promised we'd debut it at the festival. And then this is a shot from right behind Main Water Company's headquarters. Mirror Lake has been going down quite a bit lately with all the dryness, but this is taken last fall. So, just briefly, why the land trust is interested in, in conserving bald and ragged mountains. When we started asking, to try to be very strategic about where to conserve land in the early 2000s, we did a lot of comprehensive planning with GIS, asking where, where is it important to conserve land? And we also came across the fact that the state of Maine had also done the same process and they selected bald and ragged mountains as one of the 25, I think it's 25 to 50 focus areas of statewide importance in Maine. And you can see the green polygon there around bald and ragged mountains for a diversity of reasons, which I'll cover in a moment. But Coastal Mountains Land Trust also had made all of these maps. And what we did was made a map of all kinds of different resources. There's a map of water resources, scenic protection. We made a map of forest values, biodiversity. And if you're familiar with GIS at all, we added them all together and, which is a quick way of going through this, but you can see the darkest part of the map there was, in fact, bald and ragged mountains. And at that time, that was the extent of where we worked. So, up and down the coast from Rockport to Belfast, when we asked where, what's the highest priority area for conservation for a range of reasons, bald and ragged mountain was much darker and much more prominent than anywhere else. And that corresponded well with the state's analysis and the green areas being already conserved areas here, of course, so Camden Hill State Park. And we've continued to do this kind of work. We now work all the way up to Prospect and we're, we're engaging in a new planning process. But here, here's where it was in 2001. That's the Camden Snow Bowl in gray and there's a green map there. Was our first property, someone, a Judge Barrett donated to us in like 1996. So, in 2001, this is how much we'd conserved. And today, we've reached 51% of conserving bald and ragged mountains. That's a 3,500 acre area in gold that we chose as what we call our focus area. And for Coastal Mountains Land Trust, that has meant, we think it's important enough, our board is committed to raising the resources to acquiring easements or fee property of those. We don't make anybody do anything. We call people, we mail people letters and say, we think your land is really important. We'd love to talk with you. And to date, that's what's happened as a result of that kind of outreach. It's been very positive. We have some people who've not responded or has said, not now, and we take that as fair and square answer. And so, we've, we've reached 51%. What's exciting right now, in the spring, we signed an agreement with the Main Water Company, which we began talking with about 12 years ago to purchase easements, well, began talking to them about the importance of their land many years ago. This spring, we signed an agreement to purchase conservation easements on all of their property around Mirror Lake and Grassy Pond, which is an additional 1,400 acres on Ragged Mountain. And it represents taking our long-term vision to 85% complete. So, it's the, it's really the biggest, I was actually talking with a surveyor who couldn't think of a parcel bigger in Knox County.
Contiguous.
Biggest contiguous parcel of, of, of ownership. And for us, it's certainly the largest thing that we've ever contemplated doing and attempted to do. And we have an agreement now, which I'll get into sort of the mechanics of in a few minutes, over the next four years to raise the funds to buy these conservation easements. Those easements are in two phases. So, by the end of next calendar year, 2017, we'll have an opportunity to buy the easement on all of the yellow, which is everything on the east side of Route 17. And that's, and then by the end of 2019, two years later, we'll be able to purchase and close on the easements on everything on the west side of Route 17 or on Grassy Pond. As part of those easements, what's, what's really exciting is the Main Water Company is also granting us the right to develop public access to the extent we see feasible, which is largely, we're gonna revolve around a trail called the Round the Mountain Trail, which is in a light green. It's a little hard to see. But it's nine miles, starting from the Camden Snow Bowl and comes up and all the way around the mountain and back again. And it's gonna be designed to be eight to 12 feet wide and accommodate mountain biking, hiking, running, Nordic skiing, if there's good snow, which is if. And gonna be kind of an arterial trail for people who wanna have a nice, easy, welcoming walkway to then dub off and do more single track, more difficult hiking up the mountain or stub off to Spring Mountain, lots of other opportunities.
That was gonna be my question. Those tie into the existing trail, so if I wanted to do the go-all-the-way-up...
Yep. So, the Georgia's Highland Path, which is already on the property...
Yeah.
...will be permanently secured also by these easements. That's only a handshake agreement right now, and if those lands were to change hands, that trail could be cut immediately. And so, yeah, there are, the new trail is, the Round the Mountain Trail is nine miles, but the entire trail system's over 20 miles of trail. And as part of the deal, the Main Water Company, at the first closing, will be donating $200,000 towards the construction of that trail. So, we're gonna have cash when we finish the first easement to really continue construction, which is a great commitment on their part. And then briefly, while I'm mentioning, at the second easement, they're donating half of the value of the easement. So, they'll be donating $600,000 of value. So, they're making, making a major contribution to, to our overall budget there. I did just wanna cover the why a little bit more carefully because you can get into numbers and acres and all that sort of thing, but I think what's really compelling for this project, for Coastal Mountains Land Trust, is it hits such a broad diversity of values for why we should conserve land. And first and foremost is clean water. This provides water to about 65,000 people, six towns, Rockland, Rockport, Camden, Hope, or not Hope, Owl's Head, parts of Thomaston, six in total. And although the, and for many years, the water shed has been main pain to our, the Water Company, has a great filter for our water. In 2007, they put in new filtration into the watershed, which in some ways makes it so that a new buyer of the company or of the lands could rationally say, we can develop this land and just use the filter to provide water. So, while there is filtration, it's always a great model and a great ethic to maintain land as a filter for all the additional benefits, but also just for, for good water to begin with. And there's just, you know, not right now, there's not a lot of water on the mountain, but there are a lot of stream systems and a lot of wetland and water values throughout Ragged Mountain and Grassy Pond. For me, you know, first and foremost, this is really about maintaining the backdrop to our lives here in this area. I live in Appleton, so on the other side, but coming into town, driving around town, being part of this community, so many of us are here because of how it feels to be here and why we came here originally or why we wanna stay here. I love this shot up on Ragged Mountain, looking how much of a reflection of our logo it is in terms of just mountains and islands. But that, that Shelley Pingree came to our opening for this project and talked about the first time she walked to this part of the Bach property, or just above the Bach property, and how transformative it was for her to get up there and just see the bay from, from mountains and seeing how it all tied together. So, a little bit of poetry there, but I think that just the, the quality of place aspects of this are humongous. And also, big for our, our local economy in terms of what draws people to come and visit and stay. This is just a view from Beach Hill. And then, of course, I'm not real fortunate to get on the water all that often, but just what our, what our community looks like from the ocean here is just world-class, in my opinion. Outdoor recreation, we've already covered pretty extensively, but there have been and will continue to be just many, many people who love to come and wander around these mountains, whether hiking on bald or ragged. At the same time, there are just beautiful wilderness-like experiences to have on the mountains. You can get up there and really get away and feel like you're a long, long way from town. And then there's a, a, a really enthusiastic evolution of groups doing mountain bike trails, running trails, Nordic skiing, sort of beginning. There hasn't been enough snow to really get that off the ground. But then also, of course, the tie into the Snow Bowl and what they're trying to do to make their facility Four Seasons, which this land base really makes more of a reality that people will come and have a lot more to run around. And if you go to the Jordan Pond House and wanna do everything that's around there, this, I think our lands will help a new launch.
I don't wanna derail this, but are you involved in that Four Seasons Snow Bowl Committee?
I've been on, I, in the past, have been on the land use committee to just sort of keep an eye on their process, but, and we've been...
They just started up that new committee in Camden.
Yeah, no, we're, we're really friendly collaborators, but we're not actively on a committee per se. Yeah. There were some explorations a long time ago about even joint fundraising and whatnot, but chose not to do that. So, there's just a few more pictures. Couple of really exciting new partners are MidCoast's chapter of the New England Mountain Bike Association, which is a really fast-growing group of folks. And then there's some, a lot of trail-running interest. This is a picture of a section of the Round the Mountain Trail that we have constructed, which also overlaps with the Cooler Trail, the Snow Bowl. But this is a lot of the feel of what we'd like the Round the Mountain Trail to look like, in terms of ease and width, but still maintaining kind of a woods road feel. This happens to have some winds and whatnot because we were trying to extend the length of a ski trail at the Snow Bowl. But we helped raise funds to do this together with the Snow Bowl. And this is just a quick graphic of the, of the trail going all the way around the mountain. And then lastly, there's, there's no lack of ecological value on the mountains. First of all, it's just a huge open space. There was bear on the mountain this summer, which to have right near town is pretty exciting, in my opinion. I've seen all kinds of wildlife up there. There's also two very rare natural community types, which are low elevation, subalpine balds, thus bald mountain, that have three to five species of plants that you don't find anywhere else in this part of the state. You find them much higher elevations north of here. Pretty fragile and pretty special, and a lot of people think it's just sort of barren ground, but if you get down on your hands and knees, it's pretty interesting stuff. And then this is a rare enlisted plant in the state of Maine that's found on both mountains. So, if you're into botany, there's some good reasons to think about caring about this area as well. So, just quickly to wrap up, I just wanted to, again, talk about what the opportunity we have here is. Protect two very large undeveloped ponds in our community. That's the water supply, over 20 miles of trails. And that will be permanently, permanent public access that we'll be able to guarantee. The other thing that we'll be able to work on is better access to, to Grassy Pond, whether it be docks or boat launches or whatnot. They're also giving us rights to do that in the easements. Mirror Lake will stay highly managed for water and, and you're not allowed near that on foot, or on the water, at least for regulatory reasons. And then also, the, the Water Company will continue to do working forest management of the property. They have a philosophy and a management style that says maintaining a diverse forest stand is important for water quality. So, the easements allow them to continue to do that, and we will be approving all forest management on the property. So, here's just another map, if anybody has any specific questions of the map. But I did wanna get into all of the partners that we've been working with. A key one to begin with is Main Coast Territories Trust, which is the owner of Aldemir Farm and a statewide land trust who stepped in to be a leading partner in the fundraising for this effort. So, they are, were working with us on our campaign to raise the 4.2 million that we're raising for this overall. Then we have a whole other host of partners from foundations to local organizations. The hospital's signed on, Penobscot Bay Chamber of Commerce. We would love turning to you all to see the Town of Rockport in a capacity it's comfortable with endorse this project. And we can talk about what that might look like in the future. I'm not here to ask for anything tonight, but just wanted to kind of open that as a topic. I didn't come up with a percentage of Rockport this represents, but I think, I did wanna mention to you that I think this is a really significant project for Rockport in terms of just size and leaving behind a significant part of the community for this purpose. I believe that the comprehensive plan for Rockport highlights the importance of conserving Grassy Pond, if not Mirror Lake as well, and it's very explicitly written. And I guess I didn't get, I thought I had a slide that had more numbers in here. But again, we're raising four point two million dollars, and the first deadline is next year, at the end of next year, we have to have two in place, and then the following deadline is six hundred thousand dollars in additional, and then we're raising a million and a half beyond just the two easements for purchase of a couple of other pieces of land that are needed for the trail. And then a million of that is endowing and building the trail. So we're not going to wait and figure out how to build this later, we've put together a very robust budget to make sure this is all fit into one package. And we've raised a million and three to date, which I'm really proud of, because we really began that effort this spring in earnest. There's been some really early, significant contributions, so.
And the million and three is out of the first two, that counts towards the first deadline?
One, I guess one other thing for Rockport to know is all of the money that we pay to the water company will go, half of it is going to be returned to the ratepayers of the water company, so every citizen in Rockport will get a rebate, including the town of Rockport. And then the other half is stated by the water company anyways, is being reinvested in the infrastructure of the water company. So it's a real win-win, the PUC had to review the whole deal and sign off on its equity for all of the people of Maine here.
So, Rockport ratepayers or all the ratepayers of the water company?
All the ratepayers of the six towns served by the water company.
Just ratepayers, not all citizens.
Yes, sorry, just people, yeah. And I would introduce, in terms of what you, if you're asking what the land trust is looking for in terms of support from the town of Rockport, in addition to an endorsement, I would love to just introduce the notion of whether or not Rockport would consider itself the town foregoing its municipal rebate towards the project, when and if that comes forward. And it's not something I'm again asking for tonight, but just wanted to put it as a small token of endorsing the project would be, I think the total's twelve to fifteen thousand dollars, along those lines, that Rockport would get back in this rebate, and whether or not.
So that's kind of like a water franchise fee? Is that what that basically is?
Yeah, it'd be coming back to us.
Yes, yep. So as we give money to the water company, they're going to be responsible for handing it, half of it back to ratepayers, including the town, and half will be going in investment. Yep.
You had listed on your list of partners or whatever, the Camden Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
Can you tell us what that partnership looks like and how could the Rockport Conservation Commission get on that list?
Sure. Well, and that's, I guess that's the third, not final, but third part of my request to Rockport, is I would love to have a stronger liaison with Rockport, both either with Pathways or the Conservation Commission, or directly with the Select Board if you see fit. But it'd be great to make sure that we're able to keep, keep the energy and keep the support of, and the information about where this is headed. One of the key parts of that is next year, we're going to open up a process around design of the trail system, to get all the different interest groups together to make sure the mountain bikers are getting along with the hikers, and the hikers with the skiers, and that the snowshoers aren't going to tramp on the wrong kind of trail and all that sort of stuff. So having some liaison from some relevant committee would be terrific. Again, we're not asking for financial support from the Camden Conservation Commission, we've just asked them to look at the project and endorse it on its merits, and I'd love to do the same.
I don't see any reason why.
Yeah.
I'm confident the Rockport Conservation Commission-
Sure.
Brendan is the liaison to them, and I worked with them over the last year, and I think they'd be very interested in, you know, in fact, I think-
And the Pathways is a joint committee with Camden anyway.
And I'd also say, our rec committee, we're focusing primarily on sports fields, but this is something that's definitely up our alley, and I'll make sure that it gets on the agenda at some point, so we can discuss and then possibly bring you in.
Great. Yeah, it was sort of because of our longer-standing process around the Snowball, and the Snowball serving as a gateway and a trailhead, is why I got started with them earlier, but that's precisely why I wanted to come here tonight, was to say, get to make sure, I mean, this is so much of Rockport more than Camden, make sure we got the communication started.
So now we have to design logos for those two committees?
No way, look at theirs. It's just a statement.
As I say, now we have to.
And then lastly, I certainly wouldn't, we also have a campaign committee that's working very hard together to raise funds, and if there's anybody amongst you or that you have ideas that you think would be enthusiastic to participate in that process, of course, we're eager to get more support in that way.
What are anonymous, I mean, I get it, I'm not even going to ask.
Yeah, no, there's just foundations.
That's cool, I've never even heard that there was a anonymous foundations.
Yep, there's two or three that have given us that said, yeah.
They don't want to be listed.
Right.
Anonyme.
I had a question.
Okay, go ahead.
And it's for us as much as it is for you, I've been trying to push for seeing what we could do on the municipal level for tax, not subsidies, but tax breaks for those who put their land into conservation and/or easements, primarily for trails. And the curiosity is, if this town had a mechanism that said, if you allow a trail to go onto your property, in addition to things that you may get from the state and the federal level, there'd be a small break on your property taxes, is that another tool that would help you when you approach a landowner as far as getting an easement, a trail easement?
Absolutely, yeah, no, I think so. There's, I think there are lots of things like that that we would be really excited to see.
Have you seen any other towns do that? Because the only model that we found was in Washington State, it was relatively complicated, I haven't dove straight into it, but if there's one that's a little bit more simple?
Yeah, I have not heard about the, I can look into it some more, I have mostly have heard about real estate transfer taxes, where they try to designate a small portion of transfer taxes anytime a property's been sold to a fund for such things as land conservation, I'm sure it's been used for lots of other things too. But I know there was a little bit of talk about a land for Rockport's future at some point along the way, and I think that was one of the ideas, but.
I gotta do my research and come to you guys with something, because it's really cool, it's a great tool in your toolbox.
I will, I will say, I like the thought, particularly because there's a lot of trail work and effort that goes on without thinking about how do we make it permanent? And while that's great energy, it's very disappointing and heartbreaking when something, when the trail's there for a little while, and then someone else comes in and it's gone. So I think it's good to think about a permanent trail, right?
I'd make a suggestion that maybe the two of you could coordinate with him to have, you know, him come and speak, wondering if he actually might need to-
Brendan reached out to me already.
It's in the works.
Yeah, okay.
Because this is good stuff, and I'm all for, I don't know, I can't speak for anyone else, but.
It's awesome.
Yeah, no, it is, and I will say, for the land trust and for Rockport and for our community, this is a bold effort, and it's not something we're doing lightly, but I think if my pitch to people who are considering supporting something like this is it's a way to contribute to something that's going to be here forever and really contribute to a sense of place forever, and that's not an opportunity you get every day, so.
And Brendan, if you could, you know, work on this endorsement.
Yeah.
Okay, and bring something back to us, since what needs to be done and that sort of thing. Owen, you?
I had a question about, so, we talk sometimes in the rec committee about how we can utilize our outdoor spaces for more recreational opportunities. Grassy Pond, other than a small outboard, I don't think that I've ever seen a larger boat on that lake, and I know the access is kind of funny. What does it allow for and what does it not allow for? Like, could you put a speedboat on there if you could get it there?
My understanding was that there's no motorized at all, but if you're saying outboard, that's a surprise to me.
Well, and that, I was trying to go back into my mind palace and figure it out.
It does serve as the backup reservoir for Mirror, so they pumped Mirror.
Because I always see the canoes there, and I had seemed to think that I had seen a small outboard, but I'd never seen anything bigger than that, so I was curious. So I'm probably wrong, you're probably right.
I think the issue there is the water company's been conservative with it, but a good neighbor, they have a lot of sort of handshake agreements, people to let them come and use it. But I think our hope is to make it more welcoming to people who do want to come, make sure it's appropriate use, but make it so, particularly that backside where I showed the photograph, it's just a stunning entrance to come in from, and quiet, and yeah, I mean, Route seventeen is Route seventeen, I don't know how you all feel about Route seventeen, but coming in on the other side is much, it's more of a wild experience.
Any other questions? Thank you for taking your time.
Come and second, talk to us.
Oh, I had one last thing. I just, and I had said this to him before, but I was very happy to see the work in conjunction between the two land trusts. For whatever reason, I thought maybe there would be friction about territory or whatever, and I was very, very happy to hear that it was a good relationship.
Main Coast Territories Trust founded our organization, and one of the original models was to found lots of local land trusts. Fortunately, they've stuck around and reshaped the collaboration with us over the years, but yeah, we're working very closely with them on that and a number of other things.
And I'm done.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, you.
We now go on to other items on new business. The first one, this is the follow-up to our public hearing earlier, vote to approve the proposed general assistance ordinance appendices A through D effective October one, two thousand and sixteen to September thirty, two thousand and seventeen.
I move to approve the proposed general assistance ordinance appendices A through D effective October one, two thousand and sixteen through September thirty, two thousand and seventeen, as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? That passes. The next one, we need to designate a voting representative and alternate for the MMA's annual business meeting, which comes on Wednesday, October fifth, at the Cross Center up in Bangor.
Who's going?
Well, I am going, I'm sure Rick is going, I figure Linda's going, and-
I would love to, but I got a show in Portland.
Yeah. Could Rick be the A slash voter? He can't.
Bill has gone in the past as the voting delegate, and I've gone as the alternate.
And I have to be there because the OPC is having a concurrent session with the MMA people that are there immediately after this.
Sounds like a logical distribution of responsibilities.
I move to approve Bill Chapman as a voting representative and Richard Bates as an alternate for the MMA Annual Business Meeting, Wednesday, October fifth, two thousand and sixteen, at the Cross Center in Bangor.
Second. See, I got Linda's eyes.
He has his fingers.
She's not going to listen to you at all.
Okay.
Owen, who?
No discussion? Any discussion? No? Okay, all in favor? I'm not even going to call a roll on that one, okay. And I guess, we have something in here we need to sign on.
What do you even vote on?
It's, actually, if you want, I can, oh, in your packet, it shows you what you, you know, what comes up.
Proposed agenda.
Yeah, there you go. See? It's a fun time.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
Okay, the next item, we need to confirm the date and time for the Reserve Account Policy Review Workshop to be Wednesday, September twenty-first, at four PM in the Richardson Room. Does anybody have any objection to that time?
Yeah, I haven't been confirmed that three times already.
I think so.
Well, this is the formal approval, you know, we've been around just checking on whether people can make it, I just want to make sure we, all in agreement.
Mr. Parker will be absent.
Oh, that's right.
I-
By reserves account, that's.
I may or may not be, it depends, I've got a trial I've got to do in Portland, so I don't, but I don't know when that will be, so I would just, I would go schedule it.
Yeah, okay. That's a workshop, so we don't necessarily need-
No, but this is where we're reviewing the reserve account policy.
If I can't make it, I'll look at it ahead of time and send my comments in.
Okay. So we're good with that? We don't, we don't need a motion for that one. And then the next item, we want to confirm the date for the pre-budget workshop to be Wednesday, October nineteenth, six PM, here at the Opera House, we will be live streaming that one.
And the reason I say five-thirty is because we eat first?
Yes. We will have light refreshment supper for the budget committee, the town employees, and us. So, it's a bribe to get them there.
With flatbread? Can do flatbread?
No.
Uncle Stacy?
You talk to Stacy.
Combination of things.
Flatbread. Talk to Stacy, so we're all good with that?
Good.
Okay, that is an important one. And then also, I'm setting the date here for our executive session with the town manager versus, vis-à-vis goals, immediately before October eleventh meeting. We will conclude by seven o'clock, so we can be in here and start our meeting on time.
So that's a question then, is six o'clock early enough, if we need to finish by seven?
Yeah, historically, that's been wordy.
Okay, do we want to start at five-thirty?
So I just put down.
Okay, then it will be five-thirty. We'll change that on the calendar as soon as I can get to it. Okay.
That's here?
Yes, well, it'll be in the green room.
Yep.
So, that is all I have for new business. We now need to become wastewater commissioners.
Move to end as select board, enter as wastewater commissioners.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
You get to pick now, who gets the second on that one? Oh, okay, oh, good.
Okay, do we have a motion?
We have the motion.
No, oh yeah, that's right, we're going in as, all in favor? We are wastewater commissioners, now I need the motion to commit.
I move to commit the July twenty sixteen wastewater use, user debt fees totaling twenty-nine thousand, seventy-nine dollars and seventy-five cents to the treasurer for collection.
And I have triple-checked these numbers, it's moved, and it's seconded by Brendan.
I'm reading that off the memo here, so.
Yes, I know. Well, I checked all, all three pieces of paper, make sure they were in agreement this time. Okay, any comments, discussion, all in favor of making the commitment? All right, I don't have anything else for wastewater commissioners, so I think we can exit.
Move to exit.
Second. Moved and seconded, all in favor? Let's go to liaison reports. Couple things, I asked you and I think Linda, can you make the cemetery committee presentation to the select board on October twenty-fourth?
Yeah, I had asked at the last meeting for them to consider a date, they hadn't picked one yet.
Oh, okay.
So, but certainly no earlier than that.
Yeah, okay, well.
And Bill?
And maybe, maybe later, we'll have to see, I think.
Oh, that's a good point, you know, would you, we could push it back to, I'm looking at, I don't think we have anything scheduled for the November eighth, I think it's November eighth.
It's not November eighth, because that's election day.
Oh, no, that's right, November eighth, fourteenth. Okay, we'll make it November fourteenth.
Bill, can you refresh my memory on when you wanted rec to present?
Next month, Tuesday, October eleventh.
Perfect. Conservation Commission would love an October date, if possible.
Now, do they want to make a formal presentation like we've had in the past, where they come in, you know, it's all, it's all it is, is just them?
Yeah, that's what I was assuming.
Oh, okay.
The reason for the date is that I think it's important that we do it while we still have access to Bob Kennedy.
Right. Oh, okay.
So that would be a workshop then, what we've done in the past is a select board workshop.
I had tentatively put them in as Monday, November twenty-eighth, but that be after he's gone, right?
That is, yeah, so I sent you an email today.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I hadn't seen that.
Bump that up to October if possible.
Okay.
Early October would be great, but the other date is fine, too.
All right, I will have to look at that.
Yep, fine. It doesn't, you don't need to give us a date right now.
Yeah, because maybe October third, would that be too early?
I think that'd be fine.
Okay. Put that under Conservation Committee.
So that's a workshop?
Yes. Do they need, they want it to make a more formal presentation, in other words, you broadcast it, or?
I don't know that, what have you guys done in the past?
In the past, Bob has come in with a slide presentation showing a lot of graphs and information about-
You know what, Jamie's not here, there's a date in October that I think has already been scheduled for the grant work to be done, a workshop date, is that not true? Or maybe Jamie was telling me he was going to request one?
Maybe he's, I don't have anything yet.
Why don't we plan, why don't we just say this, that Jamie and I will, will figure out a time together, because there's some Conservation Commission work, and then there's some of this execution of grant work that Jamie and Bob have been doing together. It would make sense, I think, to have a single date in front of the select board to update the select board on both.
Okay, why don't you get back to me as soon as you can? Yep. We will hopefully be able to squeeze that one in. You do have the updated calendars here.
Yes.
In print. Harbor Committee is also coming in on October eleventh? Oh, that's right. Keep forgetting, you.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so we have Recreation and Harbor on October eleventh. So we can move on then.
Yep. When are we doing the reworking of the, if you want to do a wedding at the harbor Um, when are we doing the reworking of the, if you wanna do a wedding at the harbor and that whole paperwork? When's that happening?
I'm just working on that now.
Once I get that, get some time to rewrite that policy, so that's, that'll be sometime in the next two months, I would imagine.
Okay.
You got a lot on your plate. I have a lot of mine.
We're, I guess bleeding into the liaison reports a little bit, but at the last harbor committee meeting, that was a prominent topic.
Yeah.
They get a lot of negative public comment.
It was gonna be the prominent topic on the parks committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As well.
Yeah.
I talked to a lot of people. It's percolating. They're, they're not overly happy with the usage of the harbor.
Yeah, 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 'cause the parks committee wanted to talk about it too, and I told David to talk to Rick. And David said, oh, already been doing that. So, let's go back to your point here.
Uh, we were talking about getting a single date in front of the select board for the cons comm and Bob Kennedy and you to give us a report on the grant execution that you guys have been working on. Does that make sense?
Yes, we're supposed to have a required meeting under the grant. Um, and we had figured on some evening in October, Bob would be basically facilitating that meeting. And it's to present the GIS model and everything else that's been worked on under that grant. Not to be confused with the feasibility study.
Correct.
You've also been following.
Do you think, um?
But that grant, just excuse, just a very, that grant meeting, that's the whole stakeholders for the whole area, right? So that would be different, I think, than the workshop.
Different topic. I was just wondering whether it made sense to have Bob in here just, just once before he leaves in the month of October.
Do we have a date that he's leaving? Do we know?
Just he said he can do it in October, but not in November. If it's, if you think it's smarter to have.
Be asking him for two dates, 'cause we already have one lined up, uh, and we don't have a date. But we're required to figure out a date, you know, this fall and before he goes, so.
So do you think just scope of work, duration of the evening, it makes more sense to separate those into two dates? Or do you think it's feasible? Do you have any sense for how long?
Totally feasible to do it all at once.
Yeah.
And call it a select board workshop.
Yep.
Okay, would Octo, do you think October 3rd would work? That's Monday.
Um, certainly works for me. Um, what I ought to do is check with Bob and a few other people.
Raise up the flagpole and see what happens.
Yeah, 'cause the other alternative would be the 17th, which is also a Monday.
So those two Mondays are on your mind, first and third?
Mm-hmm.
We would.
Because they're not the second and the fourth.
That's correct.
We would be thinking 6:00 PM, 7:00 PM, sometime in the evening?
Um, 6:00 PM would probably, well, again, it's, you know, what would be best for Bob?
Yeah, so placeholder at 6:00 PM right now.
Who starts a meeting at 6:00 PM?
Smart people do.
Oh, really? Okay. Just wondering.
People that wanna sleep.
Yo, if it would be better, if it'd be more convenient, we could do it at 6:30 or 7:00.
Okay.
No, apparently I'm up.
Leave it open-ended for now, see what, see what he comes up with.
I'm confident we'll get one of those dates.
Okay.
Um, and to your, I think there was a question as to whether that should be broadcast. I, I think it should. It's A, it's, it's a, it's a considerable interest. And B, Bob always comes with good graphics.
Yeah, he does.
Yeah, particularly the part about the water studies and things. And if the others, you know, bringing in all kinds of stakeholders from the area, then we could do that too. That could be broadcast.
It's a good idea. Thank you. I, the live streaming will help, um, uh, keep a record of everything that group accomplished, which is supposed to be reproducible and of use to other communities, so it makes a lot of sense to record one of our get-togethers.
Okay. So, I think that is all of those. Gee, I'm thinking, library committee, we've already had the report on it, so. Um, oh, one thing that was mentioned was the seafaring series, um, that they have coming up. That's really Friends of the Rockport Public Library doing that. Uh, they have the Babbitts coming in on October 6th. Um, Jane and her husband did a, I don't know if it was a complete around-the-world sailing cruise, or they did some extensive sailing, uh, in the last year. Uh, I don't know if they have anybody yet for October 13th. Uh, Peter Ralston will be doing a presentation on the 20th. He just finished his Northwest Passage Cruise. And he's got all kinds of fantastic pictures, and I think that one they're planning for upstairs. And then Captain Linda Greenlaw, actually she has a different last name now, she got married, is on October 27th. And they're thinking that might be upstairs as well. So, those are very interesting items coming up. Um, and I wanna remind everybody of the Chamber of Commerce, um, Business After Hours this Wednesday. Uh, September 14th, 5:00 PM out at Phi Homes Designs. Um, unfortunately, I'm not gonna be able to make it, 'cause I'm gonna be in Rhode Island by that point. But I really would like, you know, if we could have a good presence there. So, it's usually a good time. Um, that's all I have. Brendan?
So, uh, ad hoc library planning committee met, um, just this evening.
Moments ago.
Friends have provided a budget of $3,000 for the, um, get out the vote campaign, for lack of a, lack of a, of a better description. The planning committee is, uh, has been brainstorming, um, events and methods for, uh, liaising with the public and trying to galvanize support and get out the vote. They are, we are interested to know whether the select board, um, would be willing, either as individuals or as a group, to take a, a more assertive and public, um, statement of support of the library, uh, of the proposal, more, more than just putting it on the ballot, um, which we did the other day. That could take the form of writing a letter to the editor of a paper. Could take the form of hosting, um, some individuals, uh, in your neighborhood to have a conversation in your home. Um, if anyone is willing to contemplate that sort of thing. It could take the form of wearing these little buttons around the hall time. And, uh, and inviting people to ask you about what and why it's a good idea. So if we or any of us individually are interested in participating in that process, um, please let me know. And I will, uh, make sure that you get plugged in appropriately.
I maybe won't ask this of you, but of the ones that have been serving for far longer than I and Brendan have, is that something that we typically do?
Um, I mean, in the past, we have, we've made a case statement when we had the infrastructure bond about, you know, why we thought the projects were worthy of support, so I think we probably could do it. And, um, and I'd had said all along that I, I think we sort of allowed the, the ad hoc library planning committee to take a lead on these planning events, but from my point of view, I'd be happy to participate. I, I don't think the select board should necessarily be planning separate events, but, you know, if you're doing a listening tour or type thing, I mean, the select board, I'm, I'm happy to show up for that.
I don't think anybody was talking about the select board hosting.
Right, right.
It's more that if you are, uh, you know, you are a member of the select board, if you're interested in participating in these same kinds of things, the more the merrier.
Yeah, but I would say, you know, make, make sure that the planning committee lets us know when these events are gonna take place.
Yes.
So that we can, we can participate.
Yep.
Yeah.
But I also think it's important for the board, um, to very publicly say that beyond just saying you put it on the, on the ballot, here's the reasons why we put it on the ballot. Here's the reasons we think it's important to publicly say that. Um, it, it's gonna carry some, it's gonna, it carries some weight. That if we, if we want this to pass, uh, it needs to be clear that the board isn't just a spectator in this. The board is actively participating and, and.
Do we wanna write an editorial for the paper that all of us would sign onto as a whole board? That's, that's always difficult with five people, because.
You know, I could take a crack at writing. You're writing something over this weekend, um, and email it back out to everybody. You know, my tendency on these things to be rather verbose, uh, so we'll need some, uh, redlining.
Well, actually, I, I think, I think that that might be a good exercise if we circulated that round and round and round, as it's likely to go, for the next two weeks. I think that's actually a good exercise for us then to ask this question one more time. And, and having sorted out where we are as individuals within the context of the five of us. And, and, um, I, I think that's a good preliminary step to making a statement. Because, you know, it, it allows us an opportunity to, to try on the full extent and the reasoning behind our support.
I don't want to get into the weeds, but just the mechanics of, of circulating something between the five of us and not having it be a meeting of sorts. How, you just send it to one and you'll tell me to send it to Jeff and Jeff will send it to Ken and?
No, that would be a, that would be a serial meeting.
Yeah.
What would have to be is I would send it to you and you would have to respond only to me.
Individually, just back to him. It's a one-on-one conversation.
He can, he can collate the.
And then you'd have to vote on it.
Then we could, we'd have to discuss it in an open meeting at some point.
Yeah.
Okay.
And our next, next meeting is October 11th. So, you know, we don't have anything in between.
Well, we are meeting bef, before then.
Nope, not as a board. We've got the reserve policy workshop on the 21st, but I doubt we'll have this thing ready by then. I mean, that's just a week from Wednesday.
That's not an official meeting.
And that's not a meeting.
No, I was just gonna say, if we could get our act together, which is doubtful, then we could possibly have a meeting in the very beginning, vote on it. It's fine. October's fine.
Ken, uh, Ken is out on vacation until the 1st of October, starting, what, the 23rd, I think you.
Yeah, yeah, the 23rd, and the whole following week and, and the weekend after too.
Vacation?
What's that word?
Don't worry, I'll be working.
So, uh, the other thing, and I suppose that I would ask this as a question, is how does the number of $3,000, which is, you know, very generous of the Friends, um, how does that strike people, uh, in terms of a budget? Obviously, an awful lot of time and energy has gone into getting to this point.
Right.
How do you guys feel about that?
Well, if, if you were to mail something to each person, so that you know that most everybody in Rockport got something, that's half the budget.
Yeah, they, um.
It seems like a pretty pitifully small budget for a, for a million dollar.
Yeah, 'cause the Friends talked about it at their last meeting, and they did have a list of what was gonna be, it was gonna be spent on.
Yeah, and Jan's, Jan's working on that. He's working with, uh, with Narrative, which is a, uh, you know, a marketing, uh, and communications, a PR company. Um, I've no doubt that they will stretch that $3,000, uh, as far as it can be stretched. I just wanted, if that number is a cause for concern for the members of this board, I wanted to give you an opportunity to raise that concern while perhaps there's still time to do something about it. I've no, I say that without any comprehension about where the money might come from.
We can't spend any town money on that.
Yeah.
Because that would be spending taxpayers' money trying to influence their votes. We can't do that. And I guess the, the only question is, like Jeff says, if it's gonna include a direct mail piece, the postage alone is expensive. I don't know how much that costs.
Well, I, I could be wrong. I was, I was doing that at first class, but at bulk rate, it was probably less. But in any event.
My understanding is it does, that, that Jan's plan does include a mailing to every resident.
Yeah.
We, um, I would also, I, I guess I would just observe that there were a lot of ideas thrown around about how to best spend the time, resources. If, I don't know whether, whether this board feels that they wanna get involved with that at all about, about, uh.
Well, I think, you know, with that, again, I'm not there, I guess, and I don't know how deep into the weeds we wanna get, but the effort has to speak to people where they're coming from.
Tell me what that means.
Some people have objections.
Uh-huh.
And we have to assume that all of their objections are legitimate.
Uh-huh.
Um, and so we can't, we can't be lecturing to people, if you know what I'm saying. It has to be.
When you say we can't, do you mean there's no point in doing that? Or do you mean?
I don't, you don't wanna take that kinda tone, I don't think. You wanna be able to say, okay, we understand that you have this concern. This is how we think this concern is addressed, and, and we understand that you have this concern. And it has to be more of that, I think, than just saying, vote for this, it's the best for you.
We are, we're trying to bring information.
Right. But we're also trying to advocate a position.
They are.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
And that's.
Who's that?
The, uh, ad hoc library planning committee and Friends.
The goal of this board to have the library.
Yeah, I think it's, it's our, our, we're trying to advocate a position too. We are, exactly.
So.
But how we do that, it has to be very delicate. Because if you say something that rubs somebody the wrong way, then, then you've lost them. And it just has to be, because there are people who are concerned that it's too big, that it's too small, that it's not in the right, all those things. And so we have to be able to address those.
I, I absolutely defend the right of, and, and the rationality of any Rockport citizen who, who chooses not to vote for this, for whatever reason they choose.
Right.
However, if our goal is to get this passed, and we have finite resources and time was one of those resources with which to do it, I don't know why we would spend any time trying to change somebody's mind.
You're not necessarily trying to change somebody's mind, you're trying to alleviate perhaps a mild objection, so to speak.
The people that are in the middle, there's some people that are already set against it, there are some people that are already set for it. It's that vast middle.
Yeah.
That are undecided or persuadable. Um, they may be leaning one way or they may be leaning the other way. But if we address it the proper way, we can swing many of them for ourselves. But at the same time, we don't want to turn them off and force them into the other side.
I would feel more comfortable talking less about persuading someone and talking more about just answering every single question that they have. And, and to, to fill in, uh, voids in their understanding of it.
Give them the information to persuade themselves.
And to that end, that sounds scary. And to that end, what I've been saying all along is I think that the ad hoc committee has got to schedule eight public forums. And even if the first seven, there's only three people come to it, there is a multiplying effect with meeting with people one-on-one. And not have, you know, any of the restrictions that they had on the, on the first go-around. And, and say, okay, we're here to answer questions. Fifteen-minute presentation and then an hour and a half of, of questions, if that sort of takes. And one of my questions is, uh, just because I'm old and I, I've slept since then, they, they are not doing any physical modeling. That's something of the past.
They are not doing any physical modeling.
Okay, so people who are concerned about height and breadth and.
Nor, nor, I mean, just from my own professional experience with this, there's no chance of pulling that off in the timeframe. If you gave me.
Physically and fiscally.
Physically and fiscally. If you gave me an unlimited budget right now and, and access to the architects, I couldn't get it done in time.
Okay.
I occasionally watch This Old House on PBS, and they were doing one where, and this is like four or five years ago. They use a 3D mod, a 3D printer.
That's what I do, that's what I do for a living, but you still need.
Still need that.
The information.
Oh, okay.
The building hasn't been designed. There are renderings that don't exist for various iterations.
Okay, so that stuff that they had.
Literally, the information is not there.
Okay, thank you. Now I understand. Hey.
Need the data.
You learn something every day.
Okay. So what they're talking about are things like, um, uh, you know, these sort of, uh, everybody get ten of their neighbors? Um, and, you know, gather them together, um, and try and, uh, you know, advocate for the library.
Oh, good, so you're gonna get the Jones boys?
Sure, yeah, I actually think you'd be better off doing that. Go and get your haircut, but, um.
Went to get mine cut last week.
They're your neighbor.
Okay, um, we need to move along here.
Yeah, so if anyone is inclined and willing to participate.
Yeah.
Um, I, I would like to be able to advertise that to them.
Okay, I'm willing.
Yeah, I'd be willing.
My time may be a little bit limited, but.
Let us know when it is, and so that we can shoot me anywhere, it'll work again. Uh, but on that topic, going back to the letter I'm gonna draft, if you have specific points that you think need to be made in that, why don't you email those to me in the next day or so?
Okay.
So that I'm not missing something that you think should be in there. So, okay.
Harbor Committee?
Yep.
Um, contemplating going back to a seven-person board, but also contemplating perhaps using the alternate provisions? Um, I didn't feel terribly well-informed, um, to, to, to be able to, uh, to advise them in that regard. Uh, what, what do you guys see as the, as the benefits of the keeping? Is there, is there benefit to keeping their board size the way it is right now, which I presume keeps their quorum size? And just adding alternates?
It was just recently reduced.
Yeah, yeah.
And I actually was part of the reason for that, 'cause they couldn't get it, they weren't, they just weren't getting their quorum. So, when I resigned, I recommended that they reduce. They did. I think that problem is largely alleviated. Um, and, and.
You know, actually, we have, um, an applicant.
Yeah, I think there are two people who have expressed interest.
I, I know of one, and we will be dealing with that one next month, now that we've approved. I, I know of one, and we will be dealing with that one next month, now that we've approved the alternate policy.
I guess I would suggest, let's get the alternates on and see how it goes.
See how it goes.
So you got two alternates and the regular members, and then if you get the seven people all the time, and they feel that, or, you know, whatever, so.
I think that's their inclination as well.
It's just been too short a time, I think, that it's only been operating as five to, to jump right back. That's my opinion.
I got, uh, the CAD files from Landmark Engineering of the waterfront area. Uh, and we're gonna use those to start to pull together, um, some visual representations of the long-term planning for the Marine Park, broadly speaking, which is gonna include, uh, some potential expansion of dinghy space, um, paths, that kinda stuff, so that we have some visual aids when they come to communicate to this board.
Maintenance of the lime kilns?
I don't know how much that'll show up in the, in the drawing, but it'll be, you know, their, their position will be marked.
This is the rubble.
So, I'm gonna ask Jamie to help me with, um, the Conscom, um, liaison report. Because he met with Dave Bolstridge today?
Friday.
Friday. To discuss the, um, the feasibility study that we have now, the draft feasibility study that we have now received includes reference to a, um, a mechanism for testing next summer, whether or not treating the water that's going into Goody's Beach will do any good.
Would this be a better topic? And I know Jamie's here, but would.
This can be a long conversation, so if, uh, so if you'd rather have it be at another time, we can do it at another time.
Well, do the workshop? Is that what you're saying?
I mean, I'd like to hear at least the condensed version, you know, so we have some information. Uh, and then maybe, you know, we don't have to make any determinations.
I'm no good at condensing.
Well, maybe Jamie is.
Give it to us.
If we have a draft report, it'd be interesting to hear, it'd be interesting to hear the bullet points, for me.
Of the report itself.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm Jamie Francamano from the Planning and Development Department. The, the draft report says that we should consider a pilot project, which is where Brendan was going. And perhaps a permanent facility that treats the storm water coming down out of two outlets and general surface flows in the vicinity of Goody's Beach. Purpose of all this dates back to three years ago, uh, a notice of violation from the federal EPA saying the water at Goody's Beach, uh, includes some bacteria that shouldn't be in there, and that is of human origin. So in other words, possible illicit connection of a sewer lateral to storm water or something else. And, um, the, uh, the addition of Brendan to this group as a liaison has added some motivation, which is great. And no matter what we do with Gartley and Dorsky's recommendations, we've realized that we have to finish what we started with some really common sense, no regrets studies of these individual sewer laterals that are in this sub watershed. We have, I, I believe, and Bob Kennedy has a list that says there are ten houses we haven't checked. So.
That number keeps growing. It was five, now it's ten. We only had.
It's been ten for some time, uh, on a list that, that Bob's been updating for us. He hasn't fudged with it, it's, it's always been ten.
Well, Rick, so let me just ask, because you told me that it's been a priority of the town all summer. But it's been, you know, we've checked these things, so.
It was down to one that we didn't, one or two that we didn't get to check, and then it grew to five. Now it's up to ten?
Well, I've recovered a lot of data, mostly on hard paper, three-ring binders, from, from my predecessors in office. And I guess some of it is a little bit difficult to interpret, because if somebody camered a sewer lateral and saw a crack, and Bob Kennedy said that, we gotta fix that, and someone else says, well, it's just a crack, leave it alone, how do you know it's contributing any?
So that's a critical issue, right?
Yeah.
Because you go and scope these things, and, and I think this group has to decide, where is the threshold for deciding to execute some level of remediation? Experts. If the experts tell us.
I thought we scoped everything.
I thought there was, we had scoped all but a couple.
But within that scoping, there are, there are, um, decisions having been made all the way through. There've been value decisions inside of the scoping, right?
Let's just say there's ten question marks left for conversation purposes.
Okay.
However, however much they might already have been looked at. We want to raise and dismiss all of them before considering these much more expensive, time-consuming options.
It's not just we want, right? Because the meeting that you had with Dave, we have to do that before we can ask Camden to help us with this problem.
So I can finish this brief recap by.
Yeah, okay.
Talking about the pilot project specifically.
Sorry.
The pilot, the pilot project involves not treating the storm water before it gets into the harbor, but diverting it to Camden's wastewater treatment plant. And it's a pilot project that is estimated to cost as little as a tenth of the permanent project to treat the storm water, so.
That's the facility you were referencing.
So it's interesting to, to do a pilot facility, a temporary facility. Obviously, you'd need Camden's permission. Compared to doing a permanent facility, that, that is a lot less complicated, because it doesn't ship the water somewhere else. It treats it before dropping it into the harbor.
Do you, do you truck the water there?
Well, what we're, what is recommended from Gartley and Dorsky in the draft is consider collecting it and feeding it through one of the pump stations, or both of the pump stations that are nearby, Harborview and the Marine Park are the names of the two pump stations. And, uh, send it literally by adding storm water to sewage conveyance, which in all other cases, you try so hard to avoid and eliminate.
Yeah.
And just temporarily do this, um, in a capacity that, in a quantity that Camden will permit for a temporary time, and they may yet say no. But, um, the, uh, as Brendan was pointing out, not only do we need to know for ourselves, but before we ask some, a neighboring community for help, we really wanna raise and dismiss all of the, um, the no-nonsense housekeeping things that we can check on our own. And so we are a little bit carted ahead of the horse in terms of having this much information about treatment or, um, diversion of these flows before we finish looking at every sewer lateral and ev-, and, you know, creating a, uh, a maintenance plan where every year we might not wait for MDOT to clean out the catch basins, you, you know, we would do it ourselves. There's various things we could do to improve the quality of the storm water. But this pilot study, when we remove a specific quantity of the storm water from the equation, if we don't see our sample numbers improve during that time, if main healthy beaches and our own sampling says you still have the same bacteria problem that you had before, and it's not uniformly a little bit less because of the storm water you subtracted, then we know that we don't wanna do a permanent facility, you know, that that's not gonna help. So that's why that's recommended.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. In other words, if we take what, if we take what the prob-, we think is causing the problem away, but the problem is still there, then it wasn't causing the problem.
And that, and I feel that it's important to be able to phrase that in a, in a very clear and concise, will you help kind of a way to Camden. And they haven't just, you know, the, uh, I, there's reason to believe they won't dismiss that out of hand.
Yeah, the good news is they haven't dismissed it out of hand.
As long as we have taken care of our end of things in advance, right? Which means scoping all the houses. Making sure that we have eliminated all of the low-hanging fruit possibilities of the contamination.
How do we scope all of the houses?
My understanding is some number have already been identified and haven't been scoped.
My understanding was we were down to just a, a small number of two or three, and then that number grew to five, and now I'm hearing it's ten.
Well, is, is it the situation where they've been scoped and they've identified issues?
One of these houses has already been scoped and has an issue that we haven't fixed.
Right, exactly. That one.
So we're not going to Camden until we fix it.
Fix that one, right.
Oh, okay, this is new news to me.
Yeah.
I wasn't aware we, we had actually identified.
We've identified one house that has a problem.
I remember that one, yeah.
Oh. That has a problem. And the idea was, we're gonna finish scoping the other ones, so that if we found any other problems, we would fix them all at one time.
How do we notify the homeowners of one that we are, we are scoping? I assume that to scope it, we have to go inside and come back out, or do we somehow wiggle, wiggle our way in from the storm? From the sewer line itself?
I mean, this is why this kind of discussion shouldn't be in liaison report. We should have all the players, Mike, I'm trying to text Mike on, get answers from Mike, have the players at, at the meeting so that we can have the conversation and get all the answers.
So, Rick, I have to say that I disagree with you about that. I understand the concept, however, you told me earlier today that this was a priority on your desk all summer long, and now you're telling me you don't know which houses need to be scoped.
Because we were down to five, and now I'm hearing it's ten. We were down to five houses that needed to be scoped.
I'm not saying he's right. You need to know.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's dial this one back in just a bit. What do you need from us tonight?
I don't need anything from this group tonight.
Okay.
I wanted to express my concerns about a number of things, which I haven't yet even spoken about, so I don't need. I mean, the liaison committee, you know, the liaison reports are, I think, us coming back and letting people know whether things are going well or things are going poorly. I don't think this is going especially well.
Okay, um, this goes on our October meeting, I think.
I would have to agree that that's why we should, uh, we need Mike here, we need Bill Lane here to be able to answer the questions.
And this goes way further, in my, in my view, all the way back to the process with which this, this feasibility report was requested. And that is just some, I, I need some clerical, some, some education from you guys about how that stuff happens and how it should happen. Because we have a town engineer, which is a great thing. But sometimes, and this, I think, is one of those examples, this process might have been, um, improved by a competitive bid where multiple engineers were involved. And, you know, and, and I don't know when and how to make those kinds of decisions, or who makes them, so.
So earlier you asked for an indication of, of support, both intent and fiscally, I imagine, from this board. And, and I think, I think actually that the liaison, um, part of our meeting is the perfect time to start to bring these up, because it, you know, this is the beacon that we need to see, as it comes closer, we need to start to deal with it. So, so it's a fine time for introduction. We, I, we could certainly go another fifteen minutes, you have another.
I don't need any more time. I just, this is important to me.
Right.
And, and some of those players that Rick is talking about are gonna go to Florida, and, and.
But what I was gonna go on and say is that, um, uh, at some point, we need to be armed with, uh, you know, with an idea of, of, of cost, so that we can say, yes, let's go do that. Even if it means re-scoping or, or what we've already done, or, or going back to problem areas.
This is what I think I would like, if you guys are willing to do it. Um, I don't think you, I don't think the, uh, the feasibility the Gartley and Dorsky feasibility study was circulated to you guys yet.
I haven't seen it.
So if you're willing to read it, um, I'm gonna do that for starters. And then, uh, I think I'd just like a time, maybe another workshop, when we really dive into this.
Yeah.
I think that's what, that's what it needs. It needs that time allowed.
And we ought to line that up with the same date.
Right.
Have there been, can I ask a quick question? Maybe, maybe I'll open another can of worms. I don't know. Have there been, how's other houses, other than the one we know about, where it's been scoped and we know there's a problem?
To the best of my knowledge, there's no.
Have there been other houses that have been scoped where we have issues that are arising? Is that where this number is creeping up again?
Well, there's cracks, right? There's a difference, and this is why I wanna.
I guess that's why I'm asking, is, is, is the.
Well, define problem.
And that's what I'm asking for, is what's the problem? Is it, are there other laterals that have been scoped where we have an issue, let's say?
The only one that I'm aware of is that one.
And that's the one that we've talked about before, but are there others that have already been scoped, or are there, are there, the one we know about, are there nine others that have yet to be scoped?
The best answer, and the most helpful, is I don't know.
Okay.
And at a recent, uh, department heads meeting, I went over a chronology that, that Bob Kennedy had provided, and I distributed that to the Conscom. And on there, he listed ten addresses that still needed attention. And so a good theory that would put all of these facts into a, a, a coherent story is that some of them might have been looked at already, but different people with different perspectives discounted the.
Okay.
The importance of the, of the possible improvements and the relevance to pollution in the harbor to, you know, possible improvements from this one house's sewer lateral.
Okay, would the.
Go ahead, Ken.
I'm gonna let Jeff go, 'cause I have a different, different.
Anecdotally, I don't mean to speak for my neighbor, but one of the things that may have spurred this is, is, uh, Mr. Kennedy going out, looking down and, and at all the exposed pipes and saying, oh my God, nobody knows about those pipes, and, and the project foreman saying, yeah, you're right. These are all, you know, the plans show this, the plans show that, and this, that, and that, and that, they don't exist. But obviously, they do. So he may have come to a new appreciation of the complexity of what's underneath. And, and been heightened in, in awareness to the, the potential of, of these cracks, et cetera. So I'm just, I, I, as I say, I don't mean to speak for him, but it is more complicated. It has the, it, it's probably much more complicated than, than you start out believing.
And the, the last thing I wanna do is replace all the expertise we already have. The, I don't see that as my role in this project, but I've been trying to be the glue because of the way things have fallen apart in the past. So just making sure people and the information are aligned.
Okay. Owen?
And so, thank you for taking the passion on. This is awesome. What's the feasibility of us actually getting those ten houses done before winter sets in? As far as financially, do we have money set aside? Do we have people set up and lined up to start acting on it?
Once we get the crew, the, the equipment here, it's just as easy to do, to do ten houses as it is to do one house.
And we have money set aside to do that?
Yes, it comes out of the sewer, it doesn't, it comes out of the sewer budget.
Are those people that can do that scheduled and booked, generally speaking, like with rec, with sports field, we think that, you know, they're kind of booked? How can we get those people here as quickly as possible to do those ten houses?
Um, Steve is working on that now. Um, he's now off of paving and doing all of.
Steve Beveridge?
Steve Beveridge, he's the one that takes care of all of that with Andy. Um, and he's, he's off not doing paving, and he's done with all of his vacations, so he's, he's back. So.
So in theory, we could have those ten houses inspected before we go on to the more comprehensive workshop that we're talking about sometime in October?
Can't, can't give you a.
Just in theory?
In theory, yeah.
And in practice, if we light a fire, it could become reality?
If the, if the company's available. There's not a lot of companies that do it.
And that's what I was asking about, the booking and the scheduling and, and feasibility.
I'm trying to reach Mike now. He may know if it's, if it's already scheduled.
This is good stuff. I'm totally cool with this conversation.
Okay. I, you know, my sense is that, like, I need to get squeaky if this is gonna happen, 'cause we've been talking about this a while, so this is me getting squeaky.
This is information I wasn't aware of either.
Well, and when we all convinced you that we had taken care of the problem, and we're really trying to find, and we're broadening it out to area sources versus point sources, but we haven't actually completely resolved point sources.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for being squeaky.
Okay.
You have anything else?
I do, but it, now's not the time.
Okay.
So if we can still do this, this dive, and, and, you know, and in terms of the timetable, I know it, it may not seem like all that pressing, but like, the goal is next summer, if there's even a chance
Yeah.
that Camden will take this water, that we have answered every last question, and they've signed up with plenty of time to set it up, build the infrastructure, and do this next summer. So I do think we already have our work cut out for us, timetable-wise.
And adding to the timetable pressure is doing, having a meeting, having, having the conversation when Bob Kennedy's still here.
Yeah, and, and, and we can't, we can't look anyone in Camden at the select board, or, or the wastewater treatment superintendent in, in the eye, and say that we've done our due diligence, 'cause we haven't.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
On the, on the pilot study, we would gather the storm water and ship it to Camden. Would we do that as the storm event was occurring, or would we collect it and then dump it in later?
There's actually some really interesting, um, possibilities about that, about actually, I mean, the fact of the matter is, our, our pumps are only gonna be able to handle what they can handle.
Right.
So, so there are sort of two ways of dealing with it, is to do some quantified analysis to figure out whether our pumps will be able to remove enough in that situation, that even when they can't handle the rest, they've removed enough that we're still gonna see a drop in the data. they've removed enough that we're still gonna see a drop in the data. Alternately, Bob has some pretty interesting ideas about how to basically create a, a catchment.
A holding tank.
A holding tank, so that you can then get rid of it at a rate that is palatable.
Well, and that's the, that's the thing that's gonna make it more palatable for Camden too, because they're not gonna wanna take the storm water during a storm event because they're getting infiltration from other sources. But if we can hold it for a couple of days and send it down a couple of days later, they may be much more willing to do it, so, anyway.
Nice.
Yeah, we've got a lot here on our.
Yeah, so.
We need to deal.
What else am I liaison on? I think I'm done.
Okay.
I did warn you.
Yeah?
I know.
All good.
Owen?
So pathways, we did the ribbon-cutting ceremony on Saturday. It was well-attended, uh, the path is cool. The, um, you know, I continue to try to push for, trying to get, and it's, it falls on me. I need to get the information to try to help push these projects along as far as the property tax, discounts, et cetera, et cetera. We're working on Camden's comprehensive plan, similar to how we submitted to you all before, master plan, I believe. We're going through a similar process, identifying things. And it's, it's great because there still is a lot of the problems that you see in Camden as far as walkability, telephone poles in, in a pathway, bump outs, they all kind of apply to Rockport too. So once we can figure out good mechanisms in Camden or in Rockport, we can start passing them back and forth. Recreation, we had Farley and Sons come in and check out the irrigation system at Marge Jones Recreational Complex to see the feasibility of it becoming fully functional. We haven't used it for three years or so. And we didn't use it much from nineteen ninety-one until three years ago. However, according to Farley and Son, the system's not in bad shape. We expended a little bit of resources to change heads. There's some things that they found, some corrosion on pipes that they're concerned about, that they're still functioning. So next year or the following year, as we budget things in to work on it, we'll try to replace those things. I have the email, there's some electrical concerns. Everything's still functioning, but things do need to be upgraded because they haven't really been used much. This is helpful and useful, and the reason that we push so hard to get them out quickly is because Sports Fields is coming next week. And Sports Fields is gonna redo all the infields and then go out into the outfields a little bit and put down sod. So having the irrigation system work makes Jason Peaslee, myself and Bob Hop not have to go out there three times a day with garden hoses to make sure that the sod takes. So we're very excited about that, that's been the Rec big project.
I got done today.
Yep. Um, so we have the report, and there's gonna be an even bigger, a more comprehensive report that Farley's gonna submit at some point. They gave us the kind of, you know, bare bones, good information. And I'd like to say thank you very much to, to Rick and all the people that allowed the Recreation Committee because we're still coming into our own, we're still just kind of getting stood up for allowing us to make these things quick priorities, we really would like to get this done. And so we're really happy about that. One thing that was interesting is I did attend a Parks and Rec Committee meeting in Camden. And because of their Four Seasons Snow Bowl Committee, or Ragged, Snow Bowl Committee that they're setting up, a lot of people actually left the Parks and Rec Committee to go join that committee. So they're also contemplating, possibly because they kept bringing it up during the meeting, the separation of their Parks and Rec Committee into Parks Committee and Recreation Committee. Not sure how that would work with potentially joining the two Camden and Rockport Recreation Committees. But having them focus more on Rec, I think, would actually cross over with our Rec, especially with these things that we're doing, the around-the-mountain, really trying to promote the area's outdoor economy. So, yeah, really happy with where the Rec Committee's at, we still have more work to do. What we're gonna end up trying to do as well is additional signage. So, um, so in the dugouts would be a sign that explains to people the proper way to care for the field after a game, so we don't have this problem continuously going. Barrett, I believe Brown owns Cedar Works, he, I should have been sending him stuff. He wants to formally join the committee, you'll see his stuff in October. He's the liaison to the Major League Baseball, and he's going to actively encourage or slash require that parents become more involved, so we don't have this, this problem. So the hope is by season twenty seventeen, the fields are good, the irrigation's good. We still have work to do as far as the fencing system, backstops, in the dugouts. Volunteer work will help with that. But the big thing that we're gonna be working on during the winter is setting up mechanisms and policies that gets everyone back on the same page, trying to get Marge Jones taken care of, but then set up policies so Marge Jones degradation doesn't happen again. The Legion, I do my Legion liaison, they've been doing a lot of renovations to the Legion Hall on Pearl Street in Camden. So that as a place to host an event or have some sort of gathering. The downstairs is becoming really good, the upstairs, we're doing a lot of work there. This is the citizens' report. I had another person, and I fully agree with this. Even though we've set the library at the location that it is, I still want to again bring up that we should reach out to the Bock Estate and try to get information on having that property become town property in perpetuity, regardless of what we have on it. I do feel bad that we weren't able to get that done before setting the library location. But I, I think that that should be something that we're working on. There's a lot of local folks around here that are part of that group and.
If you remember, Helen, my wife.
Yep.
Went and talked to several of them.
Yep.
And she gave us a, you know, a task list of what we really need to be doing if we're gonna do it. And to do it now would be easier than trying to do it a hundred years from now.
Because they're gonna continue to have babies and they become part of the estate.
Well, the memory also fades too.
Yep. And, you know, a lot of people say, oh, there's, of course they're gonna give it to you, but there may be one family member, but this unknown really makes that site confusing because I justify keeping it there because I didn't wanna lose town property. And they counter with, well, they would give it to you anyway. But we don't know that, and we'd like, I'd like to get it resolved.
You'd clear tire.
Yep. Just echoing some of the other things, again, I've heard quite a bit about the harbor and just the concern that the harbor is becoming less and less accessible to the locals. We're working on it, and I'm, and I'm happy that we are, these new policies on setup time, teardown time, possibly bumping up the numbers, so it, it makes it easier to explain to the citizens. We're, we're making a thousand dollars a day off this, and I'm not saying that that would be the number, but it's difficult when the number's quite low for them to lose the entire park. There were some complaints about people parking in the spaces that are supposed to be reserved for vehicles to have the trailers, so the monitoring of the harbor. And I don't know where that all goes, but it's things that I've heard.
I've had several people comment to me that they've appreciated having the parking enforcement going on down there because now there is turnover, and so they're able to come down and have a picnic lunch, you know, and, and things like that, so they can get in, so.
And the very last thing that I'd like to recognize is the fact that there is one citizen left. This is amazing, and, and I'm looking past Jamie because you're getting paid right now. But Maggie, thank you very much for being involved in setting up these cleanup times for Keep Rockport Beautiful. And Brendan's gonna do Beach Hill Road.
My kid, my kids and I'll sign up for Beach Hill.
Yeah, buddy.
Okay. Ken?
Uh, Cemetery Committee met last week. Linda had started doing the research on the fees, and we actually found that our fees are not that far out of line. There's a little more research yet to be done on that before they'll come back with a recommendation.
Wait, I thought we were wicked low.
We thought we were, and in fact, the person who told us we were, Ken came back and said, "Well, I guess you're not after all." So, um, that's why you do the research. And the other issue we're dealing with is these sort of rogue burials or whatever, these two children that are buried on a parcel up here. And it's, it's a very difficult situation. The property was sold some years ago, they had removed the stones, and then the, uh, the new property owner was unaware that there were burials of children on their land. Now they've become aware of it, the stones are sitting out at Brooks Monuments, they're supposed to, by law, you're supposed to put the stones back. And anyway, and they don't want the stones there on their property, so. What the committee did is, is to make a recommendation, and then we're gonna run that by the lawyer. Instead of looking up the law first, we said, "Well, let's, here's what we really wanna do, let's see if we can make the law work around it or whatever." But the idea is perhaps to put a small sign there where the graves are and saying, you know, that these people are buried here and the stones have been relocated to the Ansbury Hills Cemetery in an appropriate place there. We're gonna see if we can do that legally, I don't know whether we'll be able to or not.
Don't you have to do some sort of marking around it?
I don't know, I don't know what all the laws are. But the other options are to exhume the bodies and actually move them, which would be very expensive, and not to mention disruptive.
Yeah.
Or to remove, or to replace the stones, which the property owners don't want. Town doesn't own the land, and so, and, and I had an email question from a member of the committee, actually, you know, who actually owns the graves? And I don't know what the answer to that is, I don't know what those laws are. But anyway, the, the committee is working on that, and they're gonna meet again the last week of this month to get some more information on fees and to see if we've got an answer back from the lawyers about what the options would be for that particular situation. What else? O R C will meet next week, so we haven't had a meeting yet. Legacy, Rockport has not met.
The O R C meets on Thursday.
Yeah, that's right, this week, sometime in the, in the next week. Amelie's Review hasn't met, and I think I'm done.
Amelie's Review hasn't met? Oh, sorry. Rockport Opera House Committee is doing a doodle poll to figure out when their next meeting is. Zoning Board of Appeals met for an organizational meeting on the twenty-fifth or thereabouts. Peter Hall was expressed concerned about the process for notifying a butters within seven days. And I think he might come to Jamie and, and, and ask for a bit of broadening of the, you know, strictly, here's the project, we'll, we'll take those, we'll notate those four people, and he wants to broaden that out a little bit from a notification standpoint. For his noisiness, he was elected chair with Mr. Benson as the vice chair. And they talked about, and, and about legal requirements and clarifications of findings of facts, which is becoming, is becoming more and more important with the Supreme, State Supreme Court.
Superior.
Maine Supreme Court.
Maine Supreme Court.
Off the law court.
Law court is, has been, um, discounting transcripts and things like that, and then going, and going directly to the juggler with findings of fact. So findings of fact are becoming very important. So we're looking forward to a, a, a meeting with our attorney, if we can arrange that for, specifically for Z B A and for P B A. Planning Board met on August twenty-fourth. Again, a lot of organizational stuff. And the chair is, that was actually the, the public hearing about the things that we put on the, on the warrant. And the chair might have been a touch confused, it's too, the process for a public hearing as opposed to a public meeting. So hopefully, we'll get actually both boards in full attendance, not just the chairs and the vice chairs, for a go-around with the, with the attorney. The salient stuff on Planning Board is mostly superseded by the fact that we put it all on. So that's it.
Okay. I think we've reached the end of our session here.
Patients? Oh, meeting.
I'll add two.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Move to second, all in.